I'm going to call this meeting to order for the regular meeting of the City Council. It is July the 27th, 2023, and it is 5:30 PM. Let the record show that all council members are here except for Councilwoman Hijo. I ask that everybody that has their cell phone, please silence it at this time. Please stand for the invitation by Councilwoman Zaldania and pledge allegiance by Councilwoman Seals.
Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening, Heavenly Father. We want to thank you, Lord Father God, first, for this day that you've given us. And, Lord Father God, we ask, Lord Father God, that you lead us through this agenda that we're going to deal with today, Heavenly Father. Give us the wisdom and the knowledge, Lord Father God, to handle it correctly. And, Lord Father God, we ask of you, Lord Father God, for your hand upon our lives. Lord Father God, we lift you up in honor. Lord Father, all praise, all glory belong to you and you only, Lord Jesus. Holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No public comments? Okay, we will go on to the consent agenda. Approve the minutes of the July 13th, 2023 regular council meeting. Approve the minutes of the July 17th, 2023 special city council meeting. Review of the June 2023 PD call reports and review of the expenditure report. And I did notice on the minutes for the July 17th, 2023 meeting, it's got Mr. Flores's name as mayor instead of me.
On the bills, that was their economic incentive, so they completed everything.
They've completed everything, and that payment was made because we made the agreement. The EDC is going to be reimbursing us $150,000 on that.
Okay, we split that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that should be, the bill went out, and I expected Mr. Dutchel will get us that this month.
And the other question I had was on page 27 about the hotel and logging association. Were a member of that?
We're a member of it.
Is that for our hotel occupancy tax or what?
No, it's to get information related to the hotel industry, make sure that we're staying on top. They do have hotel, they do have hot schedules that they, or trains that they put out. And so I'm trying to stay on top of that from our side to make sure that there's anything that we have to look at. They also get a lot of statistical data related to hotels around the state, and I'd like to see how we can do it.
Okay. I just hadn't seen it before.
Yeah. It was. We joined last year, and it's the second year that we've been a member of it.
I missed it last year.
He is not. He has class tonight, but I should be able to answer.
The fence and the oil fields.
Yes, sir.
And I think we talked about that before. They're just all around them.
They were.
Are they damaged by somebody?
Well, some of them were damaged, some of them were just old. And we've gone out, and we have to provide the security around our well field, our wells out there in the fields. And this gentleman that we're, that we have doing them, we did it on a trial basis because he was about 40%, 35% to 40% cheaper than everybody else on the bids that came in. And just talking with Donnie, talking with Jose Luis Delgado, he's done an excellent job. So.
He's from Kermit, isn't he?
Huh?
He's from Kermit?
I think he is, yes, sir.
Yeah, some of those guys, they don't even meet up.
Correct.
You have to have a long chain go around to be able to secure it, and that's not it.
And this guy's done a fantastic job, talking to him, it's better quality than we had before. Had a much better price.
Good.
Pre-succeed or anything on the C bank?
Oh, they fixed it.
Oh, they fixed it?
Yes. I talked to Mr. Don, I think it's fixed.
So the one that's in there is different?
It is the correct one, yes, ma'am. Initially, the one from prior period was on there, and it was updated yesterday morning. So whatever, whatever's in the packets on there, I have it as the correct one.
Yeah, they're more than welcome to reach out to me when these packets are.
So we're leasing those stop signs on Eddie Street lots?
Yes, sir.
And so when are we going to make a firm there?
As soon as we can get the control box. Jesus has been working on that, and I think it's probably going to be another few months. But I think they've located one now, and it's going to be a new one. And as soon as we get that in, it comes in two components. One of them is the control box itself, and the other piece of it is the equipment that goes inside that controls everything. And Jesus is coordinating that, and I'm hoping that by September, we'll be maybe able to get rid of that lease.
Is it going to be the same style of box?
It'll be the same box that was out here yesterday.
Consider putting a balder or sign.
Totally agree, totally agree with you, especially on that intersection.
Yes, sir.
The other thing, the other thing that might take a little bit is the, after redo all the wiring, because it was sheared whenever that box got taken out. So that would pull everything, everything you go.
Okay, pull on wires, on signals, on the lights.
Good.
Anything else?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with a noted correction.
We have a motion for Councilwoman Seals, a second, from Councilwoman Arona, to approve the consent agenda with the correction. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The record show the motion carries. Okay, and correct, we are skipping F1? We're removing F1?
We're going to, it's going to be removed altogether. We had this item on there, and I got an email this morning, I think, from Mr. Jackson. They had been yesterday morning, and they requested that they're good with our decision collectively, and we'll move forward with their businesses, changing their business model. So it was a, they agreed, they will be, they sent me something and asked if they could plead you off for something else for a tiered schedule, and I said, more than welcome. I can put you up in that. And I said, but right now, we're not accommodating that very much yet. So then yesterday, they sent me an email, said, thank you, but we're not going to be there. Okay.
What were they, what were we doing that they were wanting to?
They are both water distributors. Yes, sir. And they wanted to, they were requesting that we give them like a tiered structure based upon volumes. And we collectively, as a group here, we're not willing to do that. And I shared that with them, and they weren't real happy at first, but I think that they've really looked at where they're at. They've also thought of their bills within, where they hadn't been paying for, but they've pumped those up, so they're, they're doing fine.
I go on to item F2, discuss, consider the appointment, reappointment, five. Keep Pecos Beautiful members, Ms. Amber Redd.
Mayor, council. I am the chair of Keep Pecos Beautiful, and I just wanted to, thanks to Sarah, give you guys a printout of the current members since there's kind of been a shuffle. As far as I'm aware, no one has mentioned or said that they wanted off the board as of today. We've all assumed that we were just going to continue unless told otherwise by the board or by council. I haven't heard anybody or anybody's come to me regarding wanting off the board. I think the norm has been that they just write a letter of resignation, and then we fill the seat as needed. This was for, per our bylaws, we are supposed to come before you in, at the last meeting in June, but I think there was some scheduling conflicts, and so we're coming to you now. And this will be the appointment for the following year until June of 2024.
They only meet on a regular basis?
Mm-hmm. We meet once a month. We meet the first Tuesday of every month at roughly 5 o'clock. 5:15 is when we usually start.
Have you had good attendance?
With our current board, the one that I've passed out to you, yes. Attendance is good. People are starting to invite people, so we're getting audience. We're getting members. We are getting lots of discussion, ideas. It's actually really, really exciting to see everyone, group participation. It's actually really, really exciting to see everyone, group participation, it's really, really nice.
Y'all have definite projects going on?
We're, we've finished the mural as far as everything on our end, we're just waiting on the artist to actually do the work. And then we have a list of things that we're in discussion about and we've actually been discussing doing a workshop so we can actually discuss them in depth and then have one of our board meetings to, to vote on the items that we decide that we wanna do.
Can you fill us in a little bit more on the mural specifically for F?
So I spoke with Mr. Russell, who is over the veterans, and he's been the liaison between the business owner, Mr. Brookshire, and the artist. And we have had all the paperwork signed that the city attorney put together. And we're just waiting on the artist to actually decide the date that he's going to paint. I reached out to Mr. Russell yesterday, he actually just had surgery and so he's been out. But he told me to give him a day or two and he should have an update from Mr. Ortiz. I personally don't have Mr. Ortiz's number, I was using Mr. Russell as the go-between, so I can't call him myself.
Might be a good idea to try to do one of your meetings so we can discuss it in person with him?
He actually has been coming, we just haven't heard from him since he signed the contract.
So do you know if he's even started?
He hasn't started, no.
And no timeline was mentioned?
No, we did in our last meeting, that was discussed. And we did look, we went back and looked at the paperwork that had been drawn up by the city. And there is no timeframe as to he needed to start between a certain time period. But I figured we could discuss that once we get a reply from Mr. Russell and go from there. I don't know if he's trying to wait until it cooled down, I don't, we had an original date of completion, but we kind of passed it. So we're just, we're waiting on, basically now, because I don't know if he has to take off for work. I don't know his schedule to even determine if we can have an agreement as to when he can start to complete.
So you just need approval on the board members? I'll make a motion that we continue with the board members that are currently in place for the Keep Pecos Beautiful board as presented.
I'm gonna change my. I'll get back to that.
Give him the gavel. He said, why, I said, what am I doing here?
Right, you wanna take over, Mr. Graham?
And right now she's saying, Mr. Graham, not Councilman Graham.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Seals, seconded by Councilman Graham, to approve the appointment or reappointment of the five Keep Pecos Beautiful board members as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The record show the motion carries. Thank you, Amber.
Thank you.
Thank you.
F3, update of chamber board upcoming events, Sergio.
How you doing, council members, mayor? Thank you for your time. Gonna do a quick little update on an event we have coming up. As y'all know, we decided to go ahead and not continue with the night in Opakus this year. And it's just to ensure that we are having successful events, it doesn't make any sense for us to do something when we're not prepared and we're not properly planned. So I have a little rundown here of what we're doing for the Fall Fair. And if you have any questions afterwards, feel free to ask. Today, I'm thrilled to present our ideas for hosting the much awaited Reeves County Fall Fair, an event that holds a special place in the hearts of our community. We'll be working diligently to ensure this year's fair will be a grand celebration full of fun and excitement for all. Our primary objective is to bring back the essence of the Fall Fair to its former glory. We plan to include student art displays to showcase the creativity and talent of our young artists. We're eager to invite local and visiting artists to display their works, adding an artistic touch to the fair that will captivate attendees. By reaching out to the organizations such as Sheriff's Posse and P B T I S D, we aim to unite the community and ensure active participation in the fair's events and activities. So that's our big focus right now, is we need to unite and work together. And if we get with different organizations, it doesn't have to be all on just one. And it'll be a much better Fall Fair or any event. And it'll entice more people to come out here to Pecos and enjoy it and be more successful. We're striving to attract more vendors and offer diverse and unique products to fairgoers. Carnival would be fantastic addition, providing endless entertainment to attendees of all ages and we're actively trying to locate one. So I'm actively trying to reach out to all the carnivals that I, that I'm seeing online and also a circus. If we can't get a carnival out here, I'd like to get a circus as well. And allow us to make some, some funds off of that as well. Needing contest is sure to be a crowd pleaser, bringing out the competitive spirit and laughter among participants and spectators alike. We also plan to organize entertaining performances throughout the event, including music, dance and adding to the festive atmosphere. To reduce the burden on hot tax dollars, we're actively seeking title sponsors who share our vision and are willing to support this event. Our focus on securing sponsorships will allow us to allocate resources more effectively, making the fair even grander and more engaging for everyone involved. So that's one of our main focuses as well, is we do have the sponsorships that we have for the annual, annual membership fees or sponsors, excuse me. But I think we need to focus on event sponsors as well, tighter title sponsors. And there's a lot of businesses here in town that would be willing to help out. And also, like I said, ease the burden on the hot tax dollars. We're committed to ensuring the success of the Reeves County Fall Fair and timely preparation is key. Over the next couple of weeks, we'll iron out all the details, provide ample time for advertising promotions. We're trying to, we have a deadline in a couple of weeks, so we're gonna meet again next week and see if we can get a Fall Fair committee together. Paul has kind of taken the lead on this as well and is already actively making phone calls and getting everybody ready to prepare for the Fall Fair, so he's really helped out within the last couple of days. We'll reach out to surrounding communities to encourage their attendance and participation in our exciting event. Once we have all the details finalized, we would be delighted to meet with you again to present a comprehensive plan, addressing any questions or suggestions you may have. Furthermore, we're pleased to share that we have made a significant progress in our search for a new executive director. And an offer will be extended soon to ensure the smooth management of the Fall Fair and other future initiatives. So we plan on making an offer and extending an offer this coming week and hopefully everything works out as planned. And we're also looking for a new admin assistant. Currently, we have a young, a young gentleman named Adriel, he's doing a great job. And he's gonna be there till, till he starts, he goes back to Texas State. But right now, he's really, his strides within the last week. He's bright, he's really helped us out quite a bit, so I wanna get somebody in there. Right now, we're just building a foundation and starting, starting all over again and ensuring that we have an effective chamber and C V B. In conclusion, the Reeves County Fall Fair has been a cherished tradition and our efforts are aimed to revive and elevate this event. We believe that with your support and collaboration, we can create an unforgettable experience that will bring our community closer together and foster a sense of pride in our shared heritage. Thank you for your time and attention.
What are the dates for the Fall Fair?
We're trying to get the sixth and the seventh of October.
Is it gonna be fair entries like they used to have, laundry work or flower arrangements or, and have judges? Or is it just gonna be vendors and that kind of stuff?
The main goal is to get back to the way it used to be, right? And make it fun again and get everybody involved, so we gotta get the committee together and that way everybody kind of gets their ideas. And we can go back and figure out that plan. And that's why I said in a couple of weeks, we'll come back up here and, and present it to you all. But that's the goal, right, go back to the way it used to be. So that's a conversation that Paul had with Jaco. And so they're working on that and if we can't get it with the F F A, I've talked to some board members that are interested in starting a committee and seeing if we can get that going as well. I know we haven't presented the budget to you all, but I wanna make sure we get it right.
You gotten everything back?
Yes, I have one right here. But, and just those things that we need to fix on it before we present it to you, yeah, we're trying to, we're trying to get good talent and a good administrative assistant as well and kind of see where we're at before we start utilizing funds for things that we don't need to, if we have somebody here that can do it here locally, so. But that's what's taking time, is we're having a lot of meetings and we're discussing things right now, we're currently speaking with the red chair, to kind of see what all they have in the works and if we really need to utilize them for those certain things or if we can utilize the talent that we have now with Adriel or with the, with the new executive director and administrative assistant. Do you have any more?
Y'all are pushing enough to battle, but small strides will get you there.
Yes, sir.
And I'm glad that y'all are teaming up, the bull, the rubio's saying, bull by the horns and I'm turning this thing around.
So, counter back to what the mayor was saying about the past events, that used to be there. Is Paul gonna be the one to reach out to some members of these groups? Because I know some of them said, well, they weren't even invited in the past couple of years to even participate. So it's like, I don't know if the quilting club would still want to be having quilts out there for display. And as mayor was saying, flower arrangements, fruit arrangements, crocheting, all different types of things like that. So do you have points of contact to reach out to those groups?
Not at the, me personally, I don't, I'm not gonna be, I'm not gonna lie to you. Definitely, I'll make sure that we get those points of contacts, ensure that we go back to the way we were doing things.
And you know, you know, some of those groups may have aged out a little bit, I don't know. But I think it'd make them feel good to be at least asked again. And then if they don't participate, that's their choice, but you know, if they don't know that they're really wanted at the Fall Fair, then they're not gonna be there.
Yes, ma'am, hopefully we get a good committee going and that way we get back to the old way of doing things.
We like the cake walks.
And I know there's, there's a lot of talented people in Pecos that that's about the only time they get to show any of their work because they don't sell it, you know, they do it for family or whatever. And so that's the only time their work is actually.
Or donating it for fundraisers.
Right, yeah, that's the only time their work is seen, is at the Fall Fair.
Yes, ma'am, that's gonna allow the family to go as well, right?
That's right.
Yes, ma'am.
And some of them do some beautiful work, so it'd be great to, to at least see if those groups would like to participate again.
Okay, I'll ensure we contact them.
Are you gonna have a cook-off too?
Yes, we're working with the Sheriff's Posse to, to get that going and hopefully get a good cook-off this year. Yes, ma'am. All right, any other questions?
Thank you for the update.
And thank you for your time, I appreciate you.
Okay, going on to F4, discuss, consider participating in the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs Texas Utility Help program. Heather?
Mayor, Council, tonight I have with us Vanessa Gomez, who is our Utility Billing Supervisor. She's gonna be the one to kind of go over this program and what it is.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, I'm Vanessa Gomez, I'm the Utility Billing Supervisor. So I'm here to ask y'all to, for us to consider going to an agreement with the Texas Utility Help, which is from the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. So what this program is, it helps assist our low-income families to help pay for their water utility bill. It includes water and store services and there's a handout in one of your packets that includes some of that information. They also help with gas and electricity and propane, which is kind of like a similar program we currently have, which is West Texas Opportunities. And so it comes from, they're both grants from the state. They have to apply online or they can call a 1-800 number and it tells them what it is that they'll need to apply for that and what qualifications they need. Some of the qualifications is that they have to live in Texas and they have to meet so much of their poverty income level to qualify for that. They have a limit of to, up to 2,400 yearly and they can't get duplicate assistance from other grants from the state. So it's either or.
You came before last year, didn't you?
Yes, with the West Texas Opportunities. We had quite a bit of people applying. Once they apply, they email us or send us the information that these residents have applied and we apply that payment or payments to their accounts.
But you don't have a number?
There was, no, I don't have exactly a number, but I can get that for you if we'd like.
It could be good for us if we don't have any who are actually participating. Are we advertising for the speakers available so that people know that they can apply?
Yes, usually when they come in and they say that they can't pay, we go ahead and give them the information, what we have, and then we refer them to the, the West Texas Opportunities.
But we're not doing anything to promote it, to let the public know that it's?
We haven't yet, we can include it in like our water bills, that way they can see that. And then we can do both, if we were to consider this one as well, we can do a flyer that includes both of them with that information.
Should it website?
We can.
If it's approved, we can put both of them up.
And the copy.
And on the app, yeah.
And on the copy touch, allows it maybe.
Absolutely, you could, yes, sir.
If we're going to consider this and if it gets approved, then maybe you need to know about it.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there gonna be somebody, someone here that can help? Because some of, some of our older, older folks, you know, won't. Like I'm an older folk. And this stuff, me and, me and phones and computers don't work, don't work good with each other. But to talk to somebody face to face would, would help a lot if, for some of our older folks that don't understand, you know, all the, the modern technology stuff, the phones and the computers. So will somebody be available to, you know, just in case they got questions or kind of point them in the right direction?
So for this one with the Texas Utility Help, the one that we're looking at into, there's not anybody here locally. But I mean, we, I know a lot of the things that I could help with, but they would have to either call or go online. The West Texas Opportunities, they actually have somebody here locally that they can go and speak with.
They need over there.
Yes.
Didn't we talk about last time, there's, if they came to pass due, you know, turn them over? Or I'm just dreaming that?
You dream a lot.
You said yourself.
I'm thinking that we, we were helping in that, we were turning over passes.
Yes, we have some of the, the list of the people that are currently, we're occurring customers. And then we send them a list of, these are the people that we see that might need help. And so then they reach out to them to see if they qualify for that assistance.
That would be a lot better than trying to advertise. Actually, when they do get in trouble.
We don't want to wait till they get in trouble. That's certainly an avenue to.
I think we do, but I can tell you that Vanessa and her staff are very good about addressing and giving the amount of time that they need. I can tell you that there's certain times that we get some of the people that are, like Conrad said, older, I'm not gonna blame him. But they will come in here and there's times when, when the ladies at the utility billing windows will spend 10 or 15 minutes with a single client just because they're having a hard time learning. And they do a fantastic job of explaining and trying to make it a better system. Some of them, I know that they come in here, they spend 10 or 15 minutes just because they want to talk. But there's, they're also very supportive in making sure that if there is something they don't understand, that they give them the TLC, we'll put it, to try to treat them uniquely to get that done.
Mayor, make a motion, we approve participation in Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs Texas Utility Help. Report presented by Heather Ramirez.
Vanessa Gomez.
Just like. You need to pick up your washcloth.
A couple of other things, we do have the city app, so it's brand new, I know some people have already downloaded it. And, but we also have now text to pay. So you enroll online through our city website, the pecostx.gov, or you can do it over the phone. And so when you get a new bill or a new balance gets posted to your account, it'll send you a text message. And then from there, you can reply pay and it'll pay your bill with the card that you currently have on file. Our yard meter program is still going on until October 31st. Our yard meter program is still going on until October 31st. So, it's $250 and they can pay that in three payments. The permits are waived, they still have to pull a permit, but it's waived. And then it doesn't require a deposit. And then, oh, our senior discount, we still have that if they're 65 or older. They qualify for the senior discount, which it includes 3,000 gallons of water included in their base rate. And then a 25% discount from their sewer rate, along with, they don't get the $10 late fee as well.
On that yard meter, let's not forget to tell our customers that they can do install a backflow preventer. And it's got to be by a qualified plumber, so that raises that price quite a bit.
Yeah, when they come in and they ask for the application for that, we have a requirement list that we give to them as well.
Now, that's been the surprise that has been brought to my attention.
We can put it out there as part of, part of the program.
Yeah, I'm not surprised, it's not, it's, we're offering a cheap rate ourselves. But the outside source, the plumber, for example, or the example. It's pretty costly.
And I think really advertising that the city is promoting these programs and offering them to the community. I think that will really show that the city's trying to work with.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Does it have a motion by Councilman Arona, seconded by Councilman Saldana, to approve participating in the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs Texas Utility Help Program? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. And correct, we're going to, you want to give us the, you have F five, update on current future text dock projects ongoing and planned here in the community?
Yes, ma'am, Mayor and Council, Charles Lino, the city manager. This is one that I had asked that Nestor Garcia with Text Dock come in and give us an update. He let me know this week that he's out for the week and asked if we could postpone this till our August 10th meeting. And he's going to do a whole lot better job on updating us than I would do. So, I'm. Nestor Garcia. He's the, Nestor Mendoza. Sorry about that, yeah, no, Nestor Mendoza. You all heard me right, right? Yes, and he will be here at our August 10th meeting, he's already confirmed that with me. So, I ask you all if you can just postpone this until August 10th meeting.
So, item F six, discuss, consider memorandum of understanding with Reed Regional Health in the event of an emergency. Mr. Lino?
Mayor and Council, Charles Lino, city manager. This is one, this is an agreement that Sal Nichols with the hospital came and talked to me about. The hospital's working right now with all of the entities to make sure that in case of an emergency, if they, if there's a declared emergency, that they, the hospital receives priority services on, on issues that come up. For instance, if they had a water main break or something, that we prioritize that. This is nothing unusual in other communities, it's just kind of a MOU stating that the city will prioritize any events for the hospital in case of an emergency. And I make the recommendation that, that you all consider approving this. It doesn't obligate the city for anything, but it's just an understanding.
Says the county, the regional hospital reimburses your cost. We had like a water line go out and the cost is putting it back to service?
Absolutely, well, they're going to be responsible for all of the costs related to it. It is strictly about making sure that we prioritize service to get them back up and running. If the water goes out, their patients need it, especially in a case of an emergency. And we want to make sure that we get the water turned on as quick as possible. We tried to do that anyway. But in a disaster situation, it can change everything. And this is part of their disaster planning protocol that they're putting in place there.
Also, in case it's a larger disaster.
Yes, ma'am.
Make a motion that you approve the memorandum of understanding with Reed Regional Health.
I have a motion from Councilman Graham, seconded by Councilman Arona, to accept the memorandum of understanding with Reed's Regional Health in the event of emergency. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Item F seven, discuss and consider accepting utility easements located on lots one dash nine, block two, Gibson's and Frodenstein addition, City of Pecos, Reeves County, Texas. Mr. Lino?
Mayor and Council, this is the utility line right along Third Street that we've been trying to get to the north of the problem areas that we've had. And all of the property owners have now entered into these agreements with us. And this is, this is asking for you to accept the agreement so that we can move forward with getting that utility line put in, in the property.
So, it only has to be signed by S? Is there not a signature page for some of this?
No, there's a signature page for... This is the, this is the form that Parker approved. It's, it's the one, so. There is a signature on this, so this is a template that we use for all of them. And we do have signed copies from all of them using this format, what they have signed. Each one of them has signed. I will ask that we, when you all make a motion on this, I'd also like to move this, move a conversation related to this item to executive session under consultation with attorney related to these easements. But looking at them, Parker's the one that drafted the easement. We're, I'm good with it, it looks like, and we just want to get that project moving forward.
We need to have that conversation before we approve.
No, no ma'am, you don't. This will not affect it at all. I just need to share some additional information I have, but it has no impact on this.
So, if you get approved, you're all, timetable, what, when we all start working?
Yeah, within a week or two.
Make a motion that we accept the utility easements located on lots one through nine, block two, Gibson, how do you, Frodenstein?
Frodenstein.
Frodenstein.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Councilman Graham, a second by Councilman Saldana, to accept the utility easements located on lots one through nine, block two, Gibson's and Frodenstein addition, Pecos of Texas, Reeves County. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Item F eight, discuss, consider entering into an engineering services agreement with WTC Inc. for professional services referred to as the Town of Pecos City Sewer Study. Donnie's not here.
He is not, and I'm taking this on and I, what I, what we're going to do is, Donnie and I have had conversations with WTC, which is Chad Tompkins. And so, Mr. Tompkins, I'm going to ask him to come up and give us a little bit of information on this one as well as on the next one. So, he's here to, I think, introduce his staff and to give us a little bit of information related to this project.
Mayor and Council, Chad Tompkins, WTC, appreciate your time. So, related to the sewer well first, let me introduce, I brought, not our whole company, just a section. But these are some of the folks that, that work on your, your work. And I thought it would be nice to bring them and introduce them to you. So, I won't make them stand up, but, but over here, starting on the. Okay, sorry. You can stand. This is Mindy Wiggins, she does marketing for us. She is relatively new and trying to help us with, with presentations and some of the stuff related to that, that I kind of relate to, Mr. Saldana on, you know, some of that, that kind of stuff. I'm, you know, not, not the best. So, we're glad to have Mindy here for that. And Ms. Olga Malto is, it works the engineering department. She's the administration person there. And she does a lot of communicating with our clients, she does a lot of help with billing for all the projects. Both the construction side billing and then our internal billing. She communicates a lot with the staff here and is very instrumental in communicating not only with, with the clients, but also with regulators and taking care of a lot of stuff like TCQ and Water Development Board or USDA funding, funding sources, things like that. So, Ms. Olga. Geron Rios is an engineer for us. He works on a lot of our projects, does a lot of the drafting, a lot of the design work. And has been, and has done a lot of work on, on this water well field project so far. As well as, he'll do quite a bit with the sewer study. Also, another engineer that works for us is Oscar Velas. And he, same thing, does a lot of the CAD work, a lot of the design work for a lot of those projects. And then Ismar.
Romero.
Romero, sorry. I want to say Velas because Oscar and Ismar are married. But she is an architect that works for us and she does a lot of drafting as well as work, architecture type related work and also in the survey department, she does a lot of that. Oh, and I should have mentioned, Oscar is, does a lot of survey work too. So, he's been in the field here quite a bit for this project already. And will, will be here quite a bit. So, so just wanted to bring them to, to meet you guys and to just give them a chance to come to something like, like this and listen to me, be boring.
Are you sure you were a one-man show through all of this?
Right? Well, I mean, we have about, what is it, 20, 20, is it 25 or maybe more?
I think it's 26.
26-ish people right now, so quite a few folks. And yeah, so we're, I was really happy that they could come. We had several that couldn't make it. I think you might have, you probably met Randy Schaefer, he's the director of operations. And then we have a new engineer, Amber Sanchez, who couldn't make it either, so. And then we have a whole bunch of, of other people that, that do various things. So, sewer study, the, I've been talking, well, the city hired us a few years ago to fix the Crow Pack lift station or to, well, to fix it, I guess. And I, I went to look at it and there was, there was, the meter had literally been pulled. Like, there was no power to that lift station. So, it obviously wasn't working and it on, and it also was full of dirt. And weeds had grown up, I mean, it was, had been out of service for quite some time. Okay, so, so I'm telling you that to give you a sense of, of what I'm, I'm trying to get at with some of the other lift stations. So, as I looked at it, it's obviously out of service. Well, okay, why do we need a lift station here if it's, you know, there's nothing coming here? Oh, well, it's supposed to come here. We, so, so obviously there's a break in the line. And I had this discussion with Mr. Arona, I don't know, a year ago or something, that, that you have very shallow water here and you have a river. And so, what that means is that sometimes these kind of things can become hidden problems. Does that make sense? So, in some places you have a leak of some sort and it's going to show up pretty quick. All right, and you, it's wet and, you know, it's obvious, okay? Now, you probably would have it be very obvious if you had a big leak on a water line here. However, the sewer lines, it's a non-pressure line, there's, it's, it's slower type flow, it's less water. And it, and it can co-mingle in many cases with the groundwater that's already here and make its way down toward the river or wherever it goes. Does that make sense? So, you can have issues here that are hidden and it's very difficult to find. So, in that project, we moved up the, up the line there in pretty good ways and built a new lift station and got it going. Now, it does have flow, my opinion is that it probably is less than it should be, probably still. So, so since then, I've, I've talked with the city, you know, periodically. And I know that we have some other issues like the, the lift station at the city yards. It's in service, it works, but it's super old and it needs to be replaced. It's got, it's, it's in a very temporary state. It's working, but it's not re, it's like, you know, they're keeping it working kind of with bailing wire kind of thing. But because, because of the, you know, it's a super old design and you couldn't get the type of pumps and it's sort of, you know, it's, it's a, it's well past its, its service life. So, there's issues like that too. And, and so, Donnie called me and he wanted us to look at another lift station. And it's pretty much, it's not quite the same as the first story, but, but kind of, in that it's out of service. And so, I said, man, we really need to take a look at this. And we need to start, need to do a study and, and, and try to figure out, you know, kind of what's going on there system-wide. And it's a, you know, it's kind of underground, so, you know, it's kind of a little bit below the radar. And, but I think, and the, and the good news for the city is that it's, it's, you know, kind of working, like it's not broke, kind of. I mean, it is, but it's not, right? Everybody still flushes the toilet and it works. So, I proposed doing a study. And, and so that's what this is for. And a lot of times if a city hires someone to do what they call a study, they'll do whatever they do and I'm, you know, many times the information in there is great and it just goes right on the bookshelf and never to be seen again. And that's not what I'm talking about. So, I don't, I try not to do that because, I mean, I've done this quite a while and I've seen so many studies sitting on the shelves in cities that they never look at and they never use. And I do, if, if I'm working on something, sometimes I try to ask them, hey, look, give me that because I might actually be able to take, make use of what's in there on this project. But what this is going to be, this study would be a very pragmatic study that is actually going to be very usable and very relevant to the city and to, you know, Donnie and his staff and, and to the council on, okay, here's the, the problems that we found and here's where they are. And this is some, some fixes and some costs related so that you have, you know about it, you know what it should cost, you know what needs to be done. And, and then it can be, it can be scheduled as, as funds are available and that kind of thing. So, that's, that's what it's for and that's what it's about. I certainly would answer any questions that you have about it, if you have any.
And with this study, are we looking at not just the lift station, but the sewer lines throughout the community?
Well, I, you know, I, I think, yes, I mean, well, yes, is the short answer. But I'm not certain that it'll be like 100% comprehensive. But our intention is to start at the lift stations and go upstream, okay? And then it, it's a little bit fuzzy on how much of that has to happen. I mean, it may, maybe some of them, you find the, the issue close, maybe you don't, maybe you have to go further. So, it's, we're going to do some truing up of the maps that exist. I, you know, city has maps and I think they're, they're good, you know, we've used them several times and I, I think they're good. I just, we'll, we'll, as we're doing this, you know, if, if there's a manhole that doesn't have the depth recorded on the map, then we'll, we'll measure it and, you know, that kind of thing. And then, you know, it's our intent to, to use the map and to go out there and say, okay, you know, how's this supposed to flow, you know, and, and go upstream and find where we think there might be an issue and that kind of thing, so.
Yeah, and the reason I'm asking is because of experience at, at the house. You know, we, we had to do a, a new sewer line and found out the sewer line was clay. And then when they got, when they, we had to have a new tab, when they opened it up to connect to the sewer line of the city, it was all collapsed because it was that concrete. So, they ended up putting, putting everything, all that section new. It wasn't just my problem. In fact, the city, and if we're going to, you know, with, with the city being, you know, you've noticed our roads or we've, we've missed a lot over the years. And the infrastructure that we can't see, water lines, sewer lines out there, they're in demand. Because there's, there's not only clay, but those paper-wound, you know, sewer lines out there that I've, I've talked to people that have called me and said, hey, I'm having a sewer problem, they open it up. hey, I'm having a sewer problem. They open it up and it's, everything's collapsed.
That old asphalt pipe, it's got, yeah. Yeah, I, look, I've seen many things. I've seen a city that has a full-blown wastewater plant and they're supposed to irrigate coming out of their pond and they don't have to irrigate. Never turned it on, never had to turn it on. Well, I mean, it's coming. It's not, it's still showing up at the plant and they're treating it and then it just leaks into the ground so fast that they never have to irrigate. So, I mean, I've seen, that's, sewer issues are not uncommon. So, we've opened up manholes before and it was literally a dirt hole because the, over time, the sewer gas and the corrosive nature of that just chewed it up and it was just gone. I mean, it was just a dirt hole. So, the, you know, and the lid was, was kind of held up by, you know, just waiting to fall in. I mean, you know, really. So, I've seen all kinds of things. It's not uncommon and it's just that, I think, to your point, you know, the city has grown and has, has kind of a unique history, honestly. I mean, it was a very bustling city for quite a lot, while. And then, this is my understanding of the history and, I mean, if I'm wrong, feel free to tell me. But it seemed like that, you know, the farming wasn't nearly as productive after, at some point and then the city just kind of became a little bit, you know, like less active and, you know, just didn't have probably as much funds to do stuff with the sewer system or even needed to, you know, for quite a long time. And now, all of a sudden, like, people are here, they're coming, it's emergency time. But, you know, good news, the city does have some more funds than probably used to. So, it's just something that you just got to attack. And, you know, I know the city's done a lot over the last, you know, 10, 15 years. It's just a ton. And it just probably is for quite some time going to seem like the thing that never ends because you just, you have a lot of infrastructure, you know, just, and it takes a lot, a long time to get through it all and update it. So, I think it's a good time to try to take a relatively comprehensive look at the sewer system, you know, the collection system, you're building a new plant, that's going to be huge. And that'll, that'll be great. But getting it to the plant, you know, there's a whole lot that goes to that too. So, and to, it's just going to get, I mean, hopefully, we'll, we're going to see as we go, you know. I think I know what we're going to find and how this is going to go. It might go a little different than I think. But you'll, at least you'll have, when we're done, you'll have something that is based off some actual observations and some actual measurements and some actual knowledge. We're going to take, you know, our own knowledge from working over here, plus the city staff and plus, you know, people that used to work here and we'll be real, try to be smart about how we approach it and to get you a document that's going to be usable and help you plan for the next several years on the sewer system side. There may be some things that we need to do real quick. I mean, there might not, but there could be. And then, there might be plenty of things that you can plan out over time. That's kind of how I think it'll go.
There's some areas on the 700 block of Oleander, resident there, and also on a new subdivision behind Gibson's and Morris. They're all new houses. They complained, unheard in a while, but I just, their coworkers complained. Of the odor of sewer gas into the houses.
Oh, really?
Will this study show where the backup is?
If it's a new house, my guess is that it's the way they plumbed it and it's the vents and it's something to do with their construction of their home.
You've got two different age houses.
Oh, okay. Well.
And there were then maybe like a four.
Yeah, I mean, if the, if the, we find that like it's backing up into the line, they got, not making it into the house, we'll be able to see that. You know, we're going to pop the lids and see what's going on. You know, this, like, for example, the lift station that's out of service, you know, we'll go to the first manhole and open it up and, you know, probably there's no flow, guessing. So, put that back. All right, mark that down. Go to the next one. No flow, the next one, no flow, the next one, oh, it's full of water. Okay. So, we know there's something going on in between here, right? So, then, then we're going to talk, you know, it'll be like, hey, what do we need to do? Okay, what do you do for that? Well, what you're going to do first is you're going to jet the line. And, you know, probably try to jet it and then we'll run a camera down it. You know, that would be like, not for the study, but like a suggested next step, right? For this, these areas, we need to clean it and put our camera in there so we can see what's going on. Now, there's, there could be some times where it sounds like that would make sense, but it's like, I mean, what are we going to learn? We know the blind's broke, it's clay, you know, whatever. We may not even camera, it may just say, well, we need to replace this stress. So, I mean, that, I think that's, that sort of thing would probably show up. We would, we would be able to see, you know, at some point, there's probably standing water and that may be where it's coming from. Even if it's not making its way up into the house, you know, thank God, but it could be, that kind of stuff will, should show up.
So, there's no cost for the sewer study?
Yes, ma'am, that's right. Well, I am, I am maybe a little bit crazy, but I, we're, we're doing a lot of work for the city right now and we're going to have people here a lot. And we have had people here quite a bit. So, it's a little bit of me trying to, because I, in my opinion, this is kind of a timely issue. I know some stuff about what's going on and, you know, the city's taken on a lot of things and I think that Charles was hesitant to add one more thing. So, I said, well, fine, we'll just do it. We're going to be here a lot. We're going to start doing it because what, you know, for me, my standpoint is that we're interested in being a longtime engineer for you guys. And so, you know, we're willing to do some work while we're here and work on this over time because I look at it as, as a good faith thing from us, but, you know, in hopes that we continue to work for you guys in the future.
So, exhibit B looks really good. Now, we move to exhibit C.
What is that, the rates or something?
Yeah, the rates.
Yeah, that's just our rate sheet. We're not, we're not billing you by the hour. This is not, that is, it's in there, it's always in our agreement, but this, the intent for this is to do it for no cost. So, it's, well, I kind of, I'll give you another viewpoint of my reasoning there too. Is if the city called me and they said, we want you to replace, you know, help us fix this lift station and do the engineering work to replace it. Well, what would I do? Well, I would come look at it and I would evaluate the situation, I would do a cost estimate and I would provide it with, this is our fee and this is what it's going to cost to fix it. And then, they would bring it to you and you would hire us to do the engineering work and then we would do that and then it goes out for bid and, you know. So, it's not terribly different from us. If, like, if you get called us to do a specific job, then that's how I would do it anyway. You know, we don't charge for the, kind of the upfront cost estimating generally, unless it's really complex or something. So, it's just a little bigger than what we would normally do like that. So, but I decided that we're going to be here a lot anyway. So, we'll just.
That's another question. I guess you brought up specifics. So, is this study going to bring up specifics? You know, kind of what we should do? What kind of format is this study going to be in? I'm kind of, I don't clear on what you're going to bring back to us. Is it going to have costs in there?
Yeah, I'll, I'll tell you what I think it should cost like. I'll say, we found, you know, a void, but, you know, that's just a break in the line here or, you know, obviously, this lift station needs to be fixed and put back in service. And there's a break in the line here and this section needs to be fixed. Or, we recommend replacing this to this because it's all super old clay and the manholes are bad or whatever. So, I'm going to try to go through, you know, all of the system and say all of the issues that you have and what you need to do to fix it. I mean, it's not going to be the engineering work to do it or the plans. It would just be a narrative with costs of what it would take to fix it.
We also come up with, you know, expansion, you know, would you think, you know, say, hey, this is the way it is now.
Right.
It'd be better if we tweaked it or did.
Yeah, for sure. Well, for example, on that kind of topic, like, I always, when we evaluate lift stations, you always want to eliminate it, just get rid of it. It can, can I put a deep line in from someplace to someplace else and just get rid of a lift station? They just cost a lot of money, there are a lot of maintenance, they're just a headache. It's a lot better to have a gravity line. So, we would look at that and, yeah, if there's sections of town that are growing or about to grow or need, you want to have, you know, we can, we can look at that and see what would make sense to expand or prepare for expansion in your system. Yeah, that's fine.
But you only have to use the ground once.
Yeah. It's a, we don't use it a ton.
They're proud of their ground.
Yeah. You know, it's, you can do a lot of work in one day. I mean, like, if you, there's, there's things that they can do and things they can't do, you know, for sure. But just to get the ground topo, you can do a lot more in a day than you can with a person walking. So, that's really the reason is that it's, you know, to walk something that you could do in a day would take like a week and a half or something with a crew. So. And you're going to get a lot more data too. So.
Do you still make motion that we accept the utility easement, not engineering services agreement with the town to take a sewer study?
I'll second. I have a motion by Councilman Graham, seconded by Councilwoman Seals, to accept the engineering services agreement with Deputy C. Inc., National Service Referring to the Town of Pecos Sewer Study. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the motion, let the record show what the motion carries. Item F9, discuss, consider Amendment Number Two to the Owner Engineer Agreement for the Pecos Water Supply Project 421 with Deputy C. Incorporated.
Does, do I just click the arrow and it goes to the next line? Sweet. That's, I can, I can understand it.
Well, one of y'all step up and help him.
You don't have our yard seat. That was better.
Yeah, that's, well, yeah, that's right.
The little red light.
There's no red light on this, but that's a good. So, I'm going to give you a full update here of this whole project and then I'll explain what the additional work is for. Can you all read that?
No, we'll go back to that one.
I clicked it and then it, okay, I'm going to go back. Whiskey is for drinking, water is for fighting over. That's Mark Twain and it's funny and it's also true. I didn't come here to fight. But, I mean, I could be talked into wrestling later after this is over, but I'm not going to fight. But I think that it's, I would say that it's worth fighting for, right? And so, I want to just continue to encourage you that this is a great project to do for the city long-term, is super needed and I think it's going to be really beneficial long-term. So, it's worth fighting for, for sure. If you don't have it, you're going to figure that out pretty quick. I'm not sure why my letters are jumbled there, but, sorry.
You need that water for whiskey.
Okay. So, we're going to, I'll give you a little background. I know the mayor wasn't here when we started this, but just, I'll be brief, but I'll try to explain how it kind of evolved because it's somewhat different than it started. And then, the, just kind of what's happened so far and what we're going to do next. Okay, the goals. When we were hired, we were told to wanted 5 million gallons a day and then it was three to five, but 5 million gallons a day. And there was already a preliminary agreement made with Madeira Valley Water Supply Corp., which I found out real quick when I talked to them and tried to get some information from them, that that wasn't right. So, it changed from that. And then, let's see, 40-plus year wellfield, sufficient quality and quantity. So, that is the goal. Which gives you redundancy in your water supply, which is very important. And it also, which the last one was kind of tabled partly way, part of the way through this because of costs, but it is back on, is the improve the supply and distribution interface with your wellfield. And I'll explain that in a minute. So, like I said, the Madeira Valley Water Supply Option was found not viable pretty quick. Once I started working on that, I was, I was told in no uncertain terms that that was not true and so, here we are. So, I went back to the city manager at the time and said, okay, you know, sorry to, you know, tell you, man, but that's not how this is going to go down. So, I said, look, let us find some water. We can do this. And, you know, the thing is, Madeira Valley is in a certain geologic zone and that's why they have good water there. And so, knowing that, and that is, that is, that is a tough thing. It's not hard to find water in Reeves County. It's hard to find water that you can drink without treating it a lot. And I will, I will say that you open up a huge can of worms when you have to treat water like you can get near town here. Because not only, it not only affects, it's not only the cost to treat the water, it's what do you do with your wastewater that comes out of that water treatment plant? It's going to be significant and it will probably change everything that you have going on with your wastewater plant. So, it's a really tough thing to do. So, it's much better to find water that you don't have to, you know, if you have to treat it, it's minor and it's, it's not something you're going to have a massive waste stream to deal with. So, we approached Texas Pacific Land Trust because they have a ton of land. And we thought if we could make a deal with one big landowner that had land in the area, we wanted to look, that that made sense. And that did make sense, at least it does to me still, and they were very open to it and we made an agreement with them and the city. And then, we added another property owner called, their company name is Tango Lima. They own quite a bit of property there also in that area. We found them to be a very agreeable and easy to deal with landowner also. Now, the pipeline route options, this is, we had two routes before, so County Road 112 and 118 was where we were intending to put this pipeline for the, for most of this whole project. Before that, when we first, first scoped it out with Madeira Valley being on board, there was a pretty good chance we were going to try to go along 285 because of where theirs is located. It's a relatively direct shot to town and it's, and it would be shorter. So, it was, you know, 10-ish miles shorter than where we ended up looking at 112 and 118 because Madeira Valley went out the window and we, was, we're, you know, we're told, look, let's, let's look at going on the county road because they're a friendly right-of-way owner and, which is true, they were. They were very open to accommodating the pipeline. However, there were some problems with it. And they're not the fee simple owner of the land. I'm not sure, which was, was not disclosed to us or the city for quite some time when we were having discussions with them. But once we got very serious about it, we discovered they didn't, they don't really own the land. They just have a prescriptive easement for the road. Okay? So, that means, what does that mean? Well, that means we have to have separate right-of-way agreements for all the landowners anyway and we have to go through a permitting process with the county to be in there right-of-way. So, it's worse than if we were just going across the county, that just across the pasture. Does that make sense? And plus, the other thing was, 118, if y'all have been down there in any time recently, it's just crawling with trucks and activity and the county's working on it and it's just a giant mess. So, at some point, I kind of got weary of it and decided to look at something else. And we feel like we have a very good, the best option, honestly, is to go straight north from our wellfield to 285 and then we're going to go along 285. So, and I'll show you a map. So, if you see, here is, just to orient you, the blue square at the top is Pecos, that's the city. The green square is the Madeira Valley site. It's not exactly like that, but it's more or less right there. And the big red circles are where we studied initially to find water to see. Now, we gave up pretty quick on the Pecos County stuff, decided that we weren't going to have much luck getting that out of the county. So, we just quit on it. I kind of, you know, initially thought, well, y'all are neighbors and it would be okay. And then, I was, I was told by what I felt like a pretty reliable source that that wasn't going to happen ever. So, we kind of quit that one pretty quick. So, anyway, back to where we, what we already thought we knew to begin with was the, there's a, some geology out there near Madeira Valley that's favorable. some geol, some geology out there near Madeira Valley that's favorable, and let's just look around over there. And so that's what we did. This is where we ended up. This is Section 24. So far, we've drilled one observation well in that, that half section at the top. And the two sections on the bottom, in Section 30, we drilled two, and in Section 25, we drilled four. So far, those are in, and I'll be happy to take you out there anytime if you'd like to go see them.
2007, where is that located on top?
Say again?
2007, 2007.
Oh, okay. It, it is north about a mile from that half section. And it goes over like to, what is that, the west, I guess, about hmm, couple miles west.
And then you hit that.
And that, that's 112, like 112 goes straight through here. Which is not 112 anymore. I mean, it's, it's not a category anymore, but this is, this is the 112 right-of-way. This is, they, they abandoned that, like, it's sort of a private road, but this is where 112 was. This is 111. So, you know, 2007 comes over here, or up to here to 112.
I'm just trying to get an idea of K and P perspective where we're at with lines.
Okay. Here's the pipeline route options. And I'm, I'm going through this not because it, I mean, it, it has a major impact on the budget, is why I'm talking about this. So initially, and I didn't really put it on here, is we were thinking initially of going along from Madeira Valley up to 285, right? Which makes sense. Then we were, we were told, ah, no, we want to stick with their existing right-of-way, Madeira Valley's existing right-of-way, which goes from here, and it, it effectively goes all the way on this purple line, all the way to town. So 17, up 17 along the railroad easement, right? It's really far. It was thirty-plus miles. This one was twenty-something, twenty-two, three, something like that. This might have been thirty-two, I think, this purple line. We were very, we were a lot happier to go up 118, quite shorter to town. But it was still, you know, thirty, almost thirty miles. Which was kind of what we intended to do because of the right-of-way stuff. And I, look, the people here in this area really want a lot of money for, for easements. And so many of them would, I think, would expect to get paid what they would get paid for like a natural gas line or something. And, and what they would get paid from the city is like zero, really. So because it's an improvement to their land for one, but the other thing is, it's, it's, you know, municipal line. It's a not-for-profit entity, et cetera, et cetera. So there's condemnation processes and all that that we have to go through in some cases. So to avoid that rigmarole, going up the county right-of-way does make some sense, because it could be quite lengthy and, and difficult. So this route actually solves some of those, a lot of those problems. This is where we're gonna do it now. It solves a lot of those problems, and it's quite a lot shorter. So sometimes you, you stare at something long enough and the right answer pops out at you, I guess, is kind of where that ended up. Because why we didn't do that to begin with is sort of a mystery to me. I'll show you another slide in a minute that kind of goes through what I'm talking about. But there's TPLT, who is our water rights owner, and we have a water purchase agreement with them. And we have, in that water purchase agreement, we have some rights to provide, to put pipelines. And, you know, and so we already really have an agreement with them, and we are in discussions with them right now if they're gonna, if they're gonna provide that voluntarily, or if they're gonna want to get paid. I do think they're going to provide it voluntarily. I can't guarantee that. That's what it seems like. Tango Lima's the same way. And then I think we have a few other entities like Oxy that will probably do that also. Okay. Y'all with me still? Okay. This is the, the elevation profile of the, the red line, which is, it's 206 feet higher than town out there at the well field, which is a very positive thing. It will definitely gravity flow to town without having to pump it ever. And so I just, you know, just showing you that little line there at the bottom. It obviously goes downhill. Which is good. Okay, next steps. Well, we're gonna do the well field design, which we're really close. I'll show you some percentages in a minute. That's, that's almost done.
Can I have a quick question?
Yeah, sure.
Is that one deal you showed, there was four circles there, and I went to Fort Stockton, this way you can, it looks like they're using them. That's not gonna hurt our supply. I guess go back.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah, the, oh, I got you, what you're saying. You're talking about the, the farm.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, well.
Right there.
We, we need to, we, before, I don't want to talk anything like that, except unless we go to executive session. I think it's beneficial for the city, and I would certainly be happy to talk to you about it. But I think we should do that in executive session. That's my opinion. No, it's not. I mean, don't apologize. I just, I can tell you now if you want what I think, but I think it would make sense for the city to, to be, to talk about that privately. If that's okay. Oh wait, I'm hitting the wrong button, sorry. Okay, next step. Well, field design, which was close. The, the pipeline right-of-way, which is, is, we're, we're getting there to where we're gonna like, you know, send out letters to landowners and get the agreements in their hands and begin that process, which is probably a sixty-day deal once that happens. Okay, pipeline design, that's under, it's in, already underway. And I'll show you the percentages in a minute. And then the pressure plane design, which is the, the part that we're gonna add on to the project because we have the budget. I need to, I need to skip ahead, and I'll go back to this, but right here. Sorry that, that's jumbled, but at least you can read the numbers. Okay, so the overall budget, that blob right there says budget, is forty-three million, four ninety-one. Okay? And that's, that's a. This is a little small for this far away. So the USDA law that the city will, is, is taken out or will close whenever we get to that point, is twenty-four million, seven hundred and fifty thousand. The grant that the city got is fifteen million, seven thirty-two. Thirty-six percent of the project is a grant. And then the city has to provide a match, but you've already exceeded this already. You've already paid more than that already in, in the wealth, the, our fees plus the, the, the test wells out of the well field and all that stuff. So you've already exceeded your match, or you'll get money back when you go closing from what, over, over this three million. So that's the full budget, okay? So when I updated the, the, the route and then material change from PVC to HDPE pipe, and I'll go into that a little bit, the new budget for the full-blown thing is like thirty-five million. So we're, we had like eight and a half million bucks to use. Now, I talked to Charles, and it's certainly my opinion that, you know, we can just do it for less, but you have it already budgeted, and you're, they're gonna prorate this grant. Like, you won't get it all. Does that make sense? If you don't do, if you don't spend the full-blown amount, they're gonna prorate the grant out too. So the, the, your percentage of the project that they're gonna pay for goes down if you don't use it all. Does that make sense? So, so we have, I think that because of the shorter line and because of a material change and some other stuff that, you know, we keep working on it, we get smarter, it's, the budget is down to thirty-five million. So the additional pressure plane south of the interstate is what we are recommending we add, as well as the city staff agrees with that. And just so happens that when, we're lucky, kind of, that when we did the preliminary engineering report with the USDA, we included this as an option of work. It, it wasn't even in the, like, the final recommended set of work. It was just in there. And because it was just in there, we can add it with no problem. Like, if, if we were to say, we have this money, but we want to do something else. We want to put another tank and replace our tanks in town or do something else that wasn't in there, they won't even consider it. You can't do it. So when we do these preliminary reports on these kind of jobs, we try to put in some things that are kind of wants or potentially if we have the money kind of thing, so that in this scenario, we don't have to, it's in there, and they're like, oh, okay, you wrote two sentences about it. It's fine. You can do it. Does that make sense? So that's where we're at, and that, I'll go back to the completion percentages. So where we're at now, and, and as we're, like, obviously this is like current plus next steps, is the well field design is about sixty percent done. Maybe more than that, actually, but there's, we, we did our, our modeling, our internally modeled, internally modeled all the stuff. And we have our geoscientist that works for us, Straub. I think we brought him here before. Y'all seen him and talked to him. But, and he's done a lot of work and modeling on it. Plus, we've sent it to Dr. Rainwater at Texas Tech. And he's doing a third thing to confirm, you know, how we want to produce this field. Because the idea is that we don't want to overproduce it, but we want to maximize the, the yield and the, how valuable it'll be for the city. So that's close, and we have most of the, the wellbore design and some of that stuff already figured out. The pipeline easement, we have about, I said thirty percent complete because I have, I have more or less verbal agreements with, well, your, your water purchase agreement plus me just talking to them with TPLT, Tango Lima, and Oxy. And that is, and I'll, I'll just go ahead and go there. Let me go there. See this? This is, I don't have Oxy on here, but, so if the, the lines, the big line to town, the gravity line will start about right here. This is the, the two and a half sections that, that I showed the zoom up on earlier. It'll start somewhere here in the north end and flow to town. Well, the yellow sections are Texas Pacific land, and the whites are Tango Lima. And then like, this, this one, I think, is Oxy. So we're, we could get, this is like ten sections that we can cross. I feel like volun, they're gonna volun, like, look, it's not a guarantee, but I'm pretty sure they're gonna provide the easement voluntarily, no cost to the city. So we're getting all the way to 285, and we have to cross one private section. Does that make sense? And then from there all the way to town, we're gonna stay, we're gonna get in the Highway 285 right-of-way and come to the Texas right-of-way. We can be there by permit, and there's no cost, and it's a, it's a, you have the right to do it. So that's what we recommend as far as the pipeline route. And it's twenty-one miles instead of thirty-plus miles. And then I mentioned the material change. That is somewhere, where did I put? PVC to HDPE, we're, two, two things go into that. Is, one is the price of PVC right now is unbelievably high, and availability is low. Just all the, there's a lot of construction going on, I guess, for one thing. You know, there was just a really, a lot of problematic things that happened with that industry, I guess, over the COVID time period. And then, so it's, it's not that available. It's very expensive, and it's just really tough to do projects right now with PVC. And just so happens that in the last few years, polyethylene pipe, PE pipe is, has improved, and it has all the necessary certifications that are required for potable water lines. So NSF sixty-one, all the AWWA certifications and all the testing that's required, the, the pressure tests and, and everything, rupture tests. The, you know, NSF, National Sanitary Foundation is, is the safety side of it. And so what the TCQ in Texas requires NSF, NSF sixty-one, and there's some AWWA regulations that they require too. And it'll be, it's stamped right on the pipe, so, and that's really only been available for like two or three years. Before that, you could use it in certain instances, but certain ones you couldn't, and it really didn't have the NSF sixty-one. But some of the, the new, they've, they've improved the resin that's used in that pipe for, so the newest generation of this polyethylene pipe is, is honestly, it's a superior pipe, and it's way cheaper. And you have a lot of people out here that install miles and miles and miles of that all the time. And so you have the workforce here to put it in, and I've gotten bids, and it's certainly advantageous to use HDPE pipe.
Chad, do you have overages built into your budget?
Oh, yeah. Yes, sir.
In case you run into any problems?
We do. We do. Usually about five to eight percent. Well, I can't, I'll have to look at the budget, but I have quite a bit that's in there for just contingency funds. And then, you know, honestly, I have that as an item, but I, I, whenever I put every single thing that goes into the budget, I'm like, I'm not trying to be the cheapest one. Like, I want, whenever you, we get bids, I want to be the highest guy. Right? Because that way, if I, if my estimate was too low and everybody's higher, you know, that's, that's problematic. So I usually are always try to make my number on the high end of reasonable. Does that make sense? Or like, I take real numbers from real projects, but I want to use the highest, high end of that because I, I don't want to be short. And when I come to you guys and I say, this is, you can get this project done for this amount, then that's what, I want to make sure that we're under that or try. You know, it doesn't always happen, but we're, we're pretty good at it. We, we do a decent job. We don't miss it much. So for sure, I, I over, or put the high end of all the items really, and then I also have a contingency. That's really all I had, I guess. So any questions on status? Well, so the, the agreement in front of you is for the, the work for the additional pressure. Well, let me explain that. So I didn't even do that. So the additional pressure plane was, if you take the city and split it with the interstate, which is a pretty natural break in the city. You have a new water tower on the south side of that. I say new, it's pretty new. It's not that new, I guess, but whenever we.
Who are the other ones?
Whenever, we, we did, that was our project, and Eric Honeyfield was here at the time as a city manager. And, and when we got hired to do that, we did some work related to, to the system also. We did some sixteen-inch line around to try to loop the system somewhat to improve pressure on the south of the interstate, because it was, it was pretty, pretty, not that great. And so that was done to, to help improve the pressure. But we had a discussion about it because we, we do some hydraulic modeling whenever we do something like that. And I told Eric at the time, look, I don't think the, there, the water tower won't fill all the way up. Maybe in the middle of the night, you know, in a static water situation, it might. But it's not probably going to fill up almost ever. And it doesn't. I think it, it's a little bit below the overflow. I mean, there, there's some capacity there that's, that's not being utilized because of just the pressure in the system. And, and getting enough volume of water south of the interstate to, to get it full is. So with this new well field, it's, it's kind of a, a natural next step to, to, to provide a separation in the, the pressure plane between the south side and the north side. And, and provide additional pressure, its own pressure on the south side. So you'll have a raw water feed, and the way this works is set up that this new field can feed the, the existing city yard, but it could also feed, if we do, the, the one on the south side of the interstate, it could feed that also. Separate with this one, or that one, or both. That's how it's gonna be working. And the idea is that we have the, the, the ground storage and the pumps to pressurize the whole area south of the interstate by itself. But you could also change valves, and you could pressurize the north side from the south if you needed to, and vice versa. So you could, you could open the valves. If you needed to take the one in south interstate down, you could steal pressure from the north, or you could pressure from the, you know, the north with the south. Does that make sense? So you have a, a kind of a fully redundant pressure system, and, and you, you do have a very natural break there that makes sense to have a separate pressure plane south of the interstate. Instead of trying to, because like, to get that to work, right, it would be really, it would be a lot. So you would have to do some really big, bore really big pipes underneath the interstate and go all the way to the pressure station with a new line. And, you know, there's, there's, there's houses, there's stuff, and it's just, it would be challenging to do it. It's a lot, it does make more sense to, to have another booster station and ground storage south of the interstate that, that would work. And you, it gives you, like I said, flexibility that you could pressure either side or both, or whatever. So, that's what it's for, the additional funds that are available, that's what the staff, and I think it makes sense to, to do with that extra available funds.
Mr. Lee, do you have additional comments?
I will. This, this kind of falls right in line with, with, uh, the ideas that Donnie and I had. We've seen a lot of municipalities, especially in our area, that their pump station goes down, and they're without water for a week or more. This gives us an opportunity and an option to where if one of our pump stations went down, we have something that's redundant, and so make sure that our system's got water, irregardless of that going down.
Well, you guys read that, it seems makes sense.
It does, it does, in this instance, it does. The other thing that Chad and I talked about is, this is technically just a redistribution, it's not changing the overall scope of the project at all, it's just some additional planning and engineering that we need to do to get that pressure plane on the south side. Donnie and I have always, from day one, had that as like a, a preference, and possibly like a dream, because we didn't know if we could get it done within the forty-three million dollars. This gives us the opportunity to get it done and accomplish everything that we want, and make sure that, uh, the citizens here have water for a long, long time, and the ca- ca- the ca- the catastrophes that have happened in Odessa when their water was down, it prevents it from happening here, or, or lessens the likelihood. If both went down, that could happen. Likelihood of that is minimal.
So, that'd be where that, we spend that eight, eight billion dollars plus?
Yes, sir. That's exactly what that would do, yes, sir.
So, how does that fit in with these figures here with the?
It just moves, all this is doing is moving it from production to engineering, to do the additional engineering design, but it does not affect the entire, uh, pot of money that we have as a whole, it allows us to accomplish everything without having that, because the savings that we're seeing on the materials from that standpoint are being utilized to design and build the, um, pump station and the holding tanks on the south side of the fairway.
There's some pipeline that has to be done, too, and some valves have to be put in, and, you know, there, there's, it's, it's, the big things are the tanks and the pumps, but also, there's a fair bit of, of pipeline that needs to be put in to make sure, you know, to get it to work, right?
So, this, this amendment would cover that additional, that, I mean, I, can you explain this, this breakdown here that you have?
On the, on the engineering service agreement?
Yes.
It's for the, it's for the professional services to design that and get the construction plans finished and done, so we can bid it out. So, the, the eight and a half million is inclusive of that also? Yes, sir.
So, how many water wells was planted left?
You know, uh, I think that, well, what we have programmed right now is fourteen. It could be, it could be less, I mean, we, that's kind of being conservative, I mean, we could get lucky, and I, I think we, I think it's, I'm, I'm pretty hopeful that we'll get lucky, because I have some reasons to think that, but, like, I'll give you an example, I think that we have them, uh, programmed in at like a hundred and fifty-ish gallons a minute, I think they'll make more than that. When we've drilled the test wells, the, uh, the aquifer, uh, we, we discovered it's confined, and it's, it's, uh, kind of got pressure on it, like, so, there's a lot of water that is uphill from your, from your wellfield, from the, you know, the Davis Mountains and everything, and so when we, you get into the, to the aquifer, the water comes up in the wellbore eighty feet, so, that's a very good thing. So, uh, and there's some wells there that are very big nearby, um, and so, um, you know, I, I, you know, I guess it's, unless there's not a whole lot of people here, so, I, I don't know, like, you know, like, that, that slide about water and fighting and stuff, I mean, that's, that's true, you have to be, you have to be kind of careful on what you share publicly, but, so, our test holes were, were small, intentionally, because it's cheaper to drill them, and we needed to find out some information, but we didn't need to drill a whole production well. Uh, the biggest pump we can get in the hole, um, wouldn't draw it down even the eighty feet, does that make sense? So, it, and, and we did all the yield tests and everything based off of that, but I, um, I consider drilling another bigger, and I came in here and told you all, we wanted to drill another bigger test well. We decided not to, we can model it, and that's part of why we got Texas Tech involved, but, um, because it's a lot of money to drill a test, and those are pricey, I mean, it was, I don't know, two hundred and fifty thousand or something, just to do it, or I think it was bigger, so it didn't be more, probably three hundred thousand or more. So, we decided to deal with modeling it and, and, uh, and making some, some estimations. In, in fact, like, my intention is, the first well that we drill, uh, production well will be, uh, was gonna tell us a lot, and, and we may make adjustments on some of the other ones, if that makes sense. But I, so, we're planning on a hundred and fifty gallons a minute, fourteen wells. Uh, it could be fewer, and I, I'm hopeful, and I, I think that there's a decent chance that it could be less.
Well, I worked with the groundwater history, so I was one that permitted those wells-
Nice.
-for y'all to drill those, so.
So, did-
That's why I was kind of curious how many there were gonna total.
I think Raymond might have, would you, you work there now?
No.
Oh, okay, well, okay, well, the, yeah, our hydrogeologist called today there, so, yeah. Did I answer everything? I've talked for a minute, and then I forget, so Randy, did I answer your question?
Well, can we go over that?
Sure.
The original agreement manager is like three point nine million.
Right.
Is that, that was there before, and then you've got net change for prior?
Well, the, the initial fee was based off of the Madeira Valley concept, okay?
And the forty-three was based on that?
Yeah, right, well, yes, that's right. And, um, because it, we had some pretty major changes in scope throughout the project, and we came back and asked for an amendment for the test wells, becau- because, uh, the way the USDA does funding, we could have bid, bid that out and let a contractor do the test wells, which would have been normal and, and kind of like expected, but the reason we, we changed and put it in our agreement, and, and out of that, the test wells amendment, which was like four million bucks, um, we, I mean, we paid, you know, to get, uh, dirt contractors, and we bought water off the neighbors, and we paid the drillers, and every, I mean, it was, it's a major, a major thing that went into those test wells, they're very expensive. And so, we took that, that scope of work for those test wells and, and added to our agreement because we could do it now, because we needed to know, before we did all the design and, and designed the pipeline and everything, we needed to know that we had enough quantity and enough quality water to, to, to move forward. So, as, as I discussed with the USDA, they won't, like, the Water Development Board does it different, like, if you, you have an expense, that, you know, you program up the project, you have an expense, and then you, you know, every month you submit, and they'll pay the city, okay? USDA does not do that. They just don't do that. So, the way it works is you have to design the whole project, and you have to get, uh, you, you get bids on the construction work for every piece of it, and when you have all of that together, which gives you firm prices for every item in the project, then they'll close it, and they'll pay the city back for what they're, you know, any, like, for yours, it's like three million is your match, anything over that, they'll pay you back the same day. So, I can't, I can't, it, it is just kind of the way they do the funding, I, you know, I was like, man, you gotta, you need to do this upfront, because we can't proceed with the full-blown project until we know there's water quantity and quality of sufficient, you know, to, to make it work. And so, so the first, uh, estimate was based off the Madeira Valley part, and then we changed it, and the pipeline was much longer in the second round of kind of scoping, and , uh, we, and then we added those test wells, um, to it, and the, the scope was, was kind of different, but we made it work, and I, I worked out, um, with USDA on moving money out of, out of construction into, into our agreement for the test wells. So, we did all that, and now, um, with the shorter line, there's more money available to do the work, the, all the pressure plane work up, up for this, near the, near town is like an additional scope that's not included in our, our engineering cost, initially, you know, from the beginning.
Can you give us a breakdown of that, where you want to spend that money, that additional money, savings? Can you give a few, you know, it's gonna cost this much to do?
Oh, I have, yes, sir, I, I actually, you're, okay, I have that, um, as far as like what work for the construction side of it?
When you offer that, yeah.
Yeah, I, I have that, um-
You know, it includes everything, y'all's fees, the construction.
Sure, yes, sir, I have that, I can send it to you, uh, when I get back.
I, I think I understand.
Okay, yes, sir. Did I give you a copy of that? I think, well, I don't know.
Of what? Not just the service, that, that's what you're looking at?
Okay, I do have a copy of that. Yeah.
That's what you're looking at.
Yeah, 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 this one here shows, it should be on your, I guess this is on everybody's?
It is, it's at the third page of the package, yes, sir.
I don't know what he's looking at.
He's not looking at the third page.
Oh, well, okay, so, huh, since, uh-
You want to wait for him to come back?
This is pretty, this project's been pretty dynamic, so this shows twelve million at the bottom, project total, twelve million, it's not, it's eight and a half, just like I showed you. So, the- Okay, the, the raw- The raw water line that comes, we're gonna connect to the existing raw water line that comes from Worsham, and that happens right at two eighty-five and County Road one fifteen. So, from, from there to the tanks in town, you have a twenty-four inch PVC line. When I, when I did, um, this, I, um, I had, I, I didn't have that piece included in the, um, I had it included in this and not in the other part of the, of the work, and then I talked with Charles, and, uh, when we, I, you know, we're kind of looking at the new costs and everything, and I said, oh, yeah, 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 I could put that all the way from, like, from the wellfield to that connection to the raw water line was, is how I had it initially for the, for the big pipeline, but Charles wanted to go all the way to the existing city yard plus the new area, so I cha- I took that mileage from one fifteen to the, to the city tanks, uh, out of this estimate and put it in with the, kind of the original scope, does that make sense?
Well, and maybe-
So, it's just, it's a difference.
Because I think maybe the price was throwing us off, I mean, that's why he was asking for the eight thousand coming in with-
Well, the eight, yeah, eight million is the total.
Eight million, because there's no price tag here that says eight million.
Yeah, yes, okay, I-
So, it's kind of throwing us off here.
Well, what's happening, and I'm sorry, I guess, I didn't even-
I'm not really responsible for the other four mils that-
No, 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 that, it's eight and a half, it's eight and a half, yeah, but, so what I was saying, Randy, is that, I guess if you're looking at this thing that shows twelve million at the bottom, is that what you're looking at? Okay, sorry. So, between the time I gave Charles this, was a few weeks ago, and, and to, and I did these slides yesterday.
So, it's adjusted numbers now?
Yeah.
From what it was?
Yeah, 'cause when I, when I sat down, I gave this to Charles, um, we had a discussion on that last bit of line, and he wanted to include it in, like, the main project, and I, when I looked at it, there was funds, it was, like, okay, it's, it's like the same thing, like, when I say the whole project's forty-three million, okay?
Still forty-three million.
It's still forty-three million, and then the, what I was saying, like, the new project's thirty-five, well, I, I could have easily said, the new scope's thirty-two, and this is, you know what I'm saying, like, it's, what, the part that I-
You changed the scope, but you added something else in that we've been needing, so it still comes up to the same stack.
Same, it's the same, and this twelve, it's like, the, the numbers that were on the presentation are right, I can, I-
Really what we see is, it's just that the numbers have changed a little bit off what this picture says.
The only, like, our fee didn't change, I didn't change our fee, I didn't change the engineering numbers, but I did take that, that last bit of line and put it on, on the, like, the, the thirty-five million section instead of the new section, does that make sense? It's hard to explain that kind of, but I forgot that, and I, I had given it to Charles like this, I could have brought a new one, and I should have, because since then, I changed this exact spreadsheet, I have the updated one on my desk, which I should have brought, I guess, but-
Do you want to break down just on the quarter?
I thought the eight million includes what we're gonna do south of town.
It does, it does.
Yes, sir, the eight million, the eight million, uh, the, the change order that, that Chad's looking at is the-
This is the change order here that has the twelve million?
Yeah, but it's not twelve million.
It's actually eight million.
It's eight, yeah, it, this, and that spreadsheet that you have on there has been updated to where it's only eight million, like, or eight and a half million, like you showed, and out of that eight and a half million, six point two million dollars is related to the construction side of it, and one point two million dollars, which is this change order, is related to the engineering side of it for the design phase.
Right, right, but it's not twelve, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that this sheet didn't match my, my slides.
Yeah, he's very easy to confuse anyway. But this one, you need a big chief.
So, so Randy, it's like this, kind of, is that, the, the last bit of the line, we, I moved it from, from this estimate back into the, the main project, right? So, it's that, that's the difference, really, it's three and a half million.
So, we're gonna build two storage tanks out of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Kind of a redundancy, the same we have in our current city yard, we'll have on the south side of town to give us that additional volume, that additional pressure, as well as a backup plan if we have a failure.
Yeah, we'll have a holding tank, at least.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and we'll size those to, you know, we estimated, uh, that, but we will have to do some work to size them properly to, uh, to make sure that, like, the water, the age of the water is proper, like, if you, if they, if you make a ginormous tank, and you don't use much out of it, it, it's not good, so you want to make sure it's properly sized for, for how much flows in and how much flows out, does that make sense? So-
Is this gonna be the storage tanks, are they water towers, or just?
They're gonna be like the, the ground storage tanks that are sort of what, kind of behind Walmart, sort of, that you'll have now, those big ones, they're, I mean, they're-
They won't be elevated, they'll be on the ground.
Yeah, ground storage tanks, those are relatively tall, so I'm not sure how tall our diesel be, probably not as tall as those, I guess, but-
But they're just holding tanks?
Just holding tanks, right.
For volume, for, for the pumps and stuff?
Yes, sir. Yeah. And we'll, we'll chlorinate in there, you know, you hit it with chlorine, and it sits in the tank, you know, it has a residence time, and it'll, it'll be like the, the right amount of chlorine as it gets pumped to, to city, yeah.
Okay. I'll make the motion, we're done, I'll make the, we are, I'll make the, the motion that we approve amendment number two to the owner engineering agreement for the Baker Water Supply Project, twenty twenty-one with WTC Incorporated, represented by, by Charles Lino, CEO of Energy.
I'm trying to do improvements on the fly, and I forgot to update, bring the update.
Give me a second.
I have a motion by Councilman Saldana, second by Councilman Graham, to accept the amendment number two as read, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If the record show, the motion carries.
And Chad, I'll email you that information.
Okay, thank you, thank you, uh, Mayor and Council, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item F ten, discuss consideration twenty-three dash twenty-seven dash six six R, resolution to approve the contract with Mammoth, act as CMAR for the County Baker City Baseball Complex Phase Two project, Mr. Lino?
Mayor, we do not, Mayor and Council, you're not gonna have it, and this is going to, this item will be brought back on the August tenth meeting. Uh, we just had the initial call with, uh, because we awarded the contract at our last council meeting, we had our initial call with the company as well as the architects, uh, today, uh, to start the planning part of it, and they're working and are supposed to send me the contracts by tomorrow, I'm gonna review those with Parker, and then we'll bring them back on the August tenth meeting, and we have a preliminary working day to start on the design and everything on August sixteenth, if, we should be in, uh, like a workshop, in essence, with them that entire day, or the majority of that day, they are flying in, they'll have a big group. Some of the comments that were made is they want to, their plan is to make sure that they want to do it in phases, so that they're doing the fields first, and then the, uh, building and the amenities and the shade structures and everything on a, at a, at a secondary time, uh, and making sure that the work site, or the active work site is contained, but their goal is to have those other three fields done and ready, uh, by the first of the year, so that they can be used for the spring, and so that's their timeline for that. So, we're trying to make sure, and I've, I've committed on behalf of the city today, I committed all of our staff that have helped with that, that they're going to be available, and we are going to have bi-weekly meetings, uh, with them as updates to make sure that we're staying on time. And we are going to have bi-weekly meetings, uh, with them as updates to make sure that we're staying on top of that and make sure that they're staying on, on their construction schedule. But they want to make sure that they get it done. They said it's a, a great time of year, uh, for them to be constructing the fields and stuff. It'll be a little cooler. Uh, we know we don't get a whole lot of, of stuff that's going to delay the construction, and I hope and pray that's still the case right now for the rest of this year, but, uh, but, uh, they're, they're wanting to make sure that they stay on their promised schedule and on, on our aggressive schedule to get it done. So they don't see any delays. They said they're also, we're also going to discuss the, the longer term lead time items, so that we're ordering all of that, getting all of that stuff ordered up front so that they can take care of that related to buildings and stuff. All of the field items and the dirt work and stuff, they're going to do themselves, and they have already the contracts, so there's not going to be any delays on that stuff. So it was really a very productive call, and we have that initial meeting on August 16th to start working on the design and everything with the architectural side of it as well as the construction side of it to push this forward. I didn't want to, the, the reason this item was on here is because in our initial RFP that went out, which we had, we didn't bring it to council by about a week delayed. That's why this contract would be a week delayed.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution number 23-07-06R, a resolution to approve the contract with Mammoth to act as, uh, CMAR for the County Baker City Baseball Complex Phase Two as presented. May I have a motion of Councilwoman Seals, a second by Councilwoman Arona, to accept, uh, the resolution 23-07-26R as read. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show that the motion carried with Councilman Graham abstaining. Item F11, update on consent to encroachment agreement with Wrangler PETX 172021 Portfolio Owner LLC for property located at 1410 South Eddy.
Mayor and council, uh, we, we will have, uh, Parker's out of town, but he is available, uh, via phone if we wanted to do that. And if you all, uh, seem so inclined, I'd like to probably move F11 and F12 to executive so that we can make the phone call with Parker to have that, let him discuss it and do that. And then if we need to, we can make the motions, uh, when we come out of executive if you all are agreeable to what Parker has the convers, uh, in his conversation.
Move on to F13. Is that what you want?
Yes, ma'am. F11 and F12, we want to move to executive.
So F13, update on the enforcement of ordinance 23-05-02 Commercial Truck Route. Mr. Lino?
Mayor and council? I had, we, we had conversations, uh, and I've had several conversations with several of y'all about how we handle stuff and how we are going to, uh, enforce, uh, the new truck route ordinance. And so I wanted to make sure that we had the most reliable source that we have, being Chief Trangal here, uh, to probably give her insight as to, as to what the protocol is from the police department standpoint, because we get varying information all the time. And, well, how come they let this guy do this and they don't let that guy do that? I'm not going to speak for Chief, but I will have her come up and kind of address it, uh, because I think there's a lot of times that, uh, it's professional judgment, and I think each one of us use professional judgment every day in what we do. And I think sometimes our police officers have to do that, too. So I'm going to let Chief, yes, yes. I'm going to let Chief come up and kind of, and, and I'm getting around the, without any foresight, so it's going to be, it's going to be cold. Am I correct, Chief? But it's kind of just general, and just to give you an insight so that we can share with our citizens that way.
Mayor, council, Lisa Trangal, Chief of Police. So, um, since we were here last Monday, uh, we did some looking around as far as some of the semis or 18-wheelers that are being parked in the city limits on, uh, parking lots, being business parking lots. Legally, we cannot just latch on to those vehicles and, and pull them off those parking lots. That's up to the property owner if they don't want them on there. Now, if we see them drive down the city street and park in the parking lot, we can cite them all day long.
Well, that would be an issue with the law, so...
That's correct. And, um, when I walked out of here, I already had the officers dealing with those people that night. Uh, one gentleman in particular parked there, has for over a year, and drives to Odessa where he lives. Comes back the next day, picks up his truck and goes and does his work. And, um, so we did, um, have both of those gentlemen move. Uh, one of them was cited, um, because we actually saw, and he said, "Yep, I drove it here," so that one was cited. Since then, there's a little closer look that I have with the, the truck route. Um, there was still signage up showing that Stafford and Eddy Street were still a truck route. Um, I think probably the street department just had missed a few signs along the way. So those were quickly pointed out to me, obviously, once we start doing a, a little more intense enforcement. So myself and Donnie, we have both talked about it. Um, if it's vehicles parked in a residential area on a city street, those we can work with. We can absolutely legally pull those trucks onto a wrecker. If it's parked into their house or their property, we cannot legally just go latch on to it with the wrecker and take it off.
But you can cite them?
We can cite them if we see them drive there. Nothing in the ordinance shows that they can't park on their private property. And so that's why I think there's some, a few holes in this ordinance. It, we really want to put some teeth in it and enforce it. I think we need to look at some maybe other modifications. And I don't know, Ms. Seals, I think, was the only one recently at a meeting that Tech Dot Group had with regards to truck parking, uh, not just in the city, but in the county in general. And Reeves County was one of the hotspots, if you will, that they showed us on a map, where there is not enough semi truck parking that's here in our community. So you'll see them parked on sides of roadway, just like in Odessa off 338 and I-20. They just park up along that stretch of land. Who knows whose land it is, but we are obviously going to experience some of those same situations. And the drivers, some of them, of course, they live in their truck. That's what they do. They want to come in and go to the laundromats. Now, should somebody build a laundromat, maybe out on where the route is? That would be great. Yeah, yeah, you could probably make a, a good, a good bu, bit there, because they want to have, uh, the ability to wash their laundry, because when I say they live in their trucks, they do. They sleep in there. They'll go to somewhere where they can shower, and then they're back on the road again. So I think that we just, um... So what we've done just the past week and a half since we were last here is, we printed the ordinance, we printed the map. We've given a lot of warnings and just said, "Here it is. This is what the route is." A lot of them said they didn't know. A lot of the companies said that they didn't know. Whether they did or did not, and I'm not going to get in that debate with them, because I know we published it quite a bit. But to say that we've hand-delivered notices to all these companies, we have not. I know that there is, off of 13th and Martinez, there's a trucking company back there. You know, there's trucks coming out of where the Bessie Haynes Construction is, out of where the high school trucking is, or the construction. So of course, we're trying to see what we can do to let these people work, but also remedy our situations as well. So that's just kind of where we stand on that. And, um, looking for better options, maybe, or other ability. I know one suggestion was let them park in a truck stop and they can Uber into town. I don't know about you guys, but we don't have that here, so...
Another opportunity for business.
It is. And in the past, there have been, uh, people that have approached us about putting some sort of taxi service here. That's never really played out. So, um, I'm open to suggestions for you guys. I know, like I said, Ms. Seals went and listened through the meeting that the Tech Dot Group gave. It's nothing that's going to be solved overnight, obviously. Um, Colley Road's going to be kind of an experimental place that they're going to use. Oh, yeah, Ms. Winkles was there, too. So that's kind of an experimental place that they're going to maybe put a parking lot, just to see what the reaction or the use of what these semis are going to be.
Two of them, one on each side.
One on each side. Now, how quick that's going to happen, and I don't know about you guys, but if you ever drive around and say, "Well, we have a lot of trucks parked here," imagine the ones that aren't getting in those spaces. Like, where are they parking? And so I'm sure the county probably deals with a lot of that, because with that becomes a lot of waste, which we were, they talked about in Culberson County and in Ward County, what they're dealing with. The tires, the oil, the human waste, that's just kind of thrown out there. So I do think there's some other avenues that maybe we need to look at as well. What that's going to be, I have no idea.
Another, when I worked at Duval, we used to get picked up here at the road, you know?
Yes, sir.
The buses, I don't know who, I guess they paid Alicia Weaver for the county, not sure on that, how that was handled back then in the 80s. But, and I don't know if the city has land or, or we could do it to, say, "Hey, here's a place to park your truck." But then, like you said earlier, we're going to deal with the trash, because they're not going to throw all their trash in. Even if we provide dumpsters, you know, they're not going to do this.
And one of the things that came up in that meeting was these truck stops, uh, and there was a lady from Bamhorn that specifically said a truck stop was coming in, but they said they'd only come in if the number of parking spaces for the trucks was reduced.
Was reduced.
Even if, so, there is federal money to help with some of this, but even if they were willing to give some of that federal money to these people that are willing to build a truck stop, they don't necessarily want 100 spaces, because that's 100 more times that they've got to clean up, tires and oil and trash. And so that's why they're not encouraged to build a larger facility, because it's just a larger amount of headache for them later. They may get some money to help upfront to build it, but who's going to maintain it afterwards? And that's the issue, is the trash that, whether it's oil...
And that was the, the biggest thing, yes.
It's trash, and they have to deal with the mess. And we, we've seen it over here at all subs and things. There's tires piled up back there.
Yep.
And, I mean, I haven't gotten actually all the oil cans or anything else, but I'm sure there's oil and other things there, too. But, you know, this is where there are some company truck drivers that are extremely good. They're professional drivers, and they really abide by the rules. But you have a lot of independents that aren't going to do that. And the, you know, saying one bad apple spoils the barrel, that's a situation here. It just takes one or two, every, every truck stop to leave their trash that starts causing a problem.
So you're right. If the city has property and they want to invest in it, put up the security lights, the fencing, and the janitorial service for a better truck, yes. And so it was some ideas that were being expressed to this group. Of course, they were going to go back to the workforce of commercial motor vehicles and let them, you know, kind of, here's our concern. Like Ms. Seals said, you know, you're going to have the professional truck driving companies that, they're going to take care of their part. It's the other ones that are not doing their part.
And the thing that concerns me also is, you know, lack of importance, because you don't have the manpower. You're scattered, and what do you do, which one do you take care of, you know?
Sure.
And that's the biggest obstacle that we face. And that's my biggest expression to people when they, "Well, we have too many trucks. Where are the police? The police don't do nothing." They, they got openings.
By all means, go to the academy, and we'll be glad to give you a look.
It's hard to be everywhere all the time, enforcing everything that should not be happening. I mean, they can't, I mean, it's up to us as residents to help feed the eyes and ears, and when you see an issue, call the PD and, and let them be aware of it. So as soon as they figure it, they can go investigate.
And that's the thing that...
It's kind of where you want to set your priorities, though.
Sure.
Is this truck trash going to be a priority, or is it going to be a low priority or a high priority? That's up to you to decide.
It is. And so a murder as opposed to where an 18-wheeler is parked, there's a difference in priority, you know? And yes, can we pay overtime, like I explained last time, to have somebody several hours, four hours, eight hours, whatever you want to look at, we can do that. I, I challenge you to look at the numbers, though, where that's going to go. And it's not that easy to send people to get commercial motor vehicles certified, because our officers are not certified to do CMV inspections. DPS has special criteria for that. It's not, not just like a 40-hour course that you're going to go to. There's lots to it. Is there money to be made on those citations? Absolutely. City gets a little portion only, and the rest goes to the state. And so it's, um, we really got to weigh it out. We did try having a traffic officer, if you will, and that worked out fairly good, but right now I have them back on shift. I cannot afford to, I can't afford to lose any more people than what I've lost already.
I guess, so I guess with the ordinance, and you said they can park, they can go through a city street, city number of the street, park in their property. We can give them a citation, but you're saying we got to prove that they drove. Well, that, that to me is obvious. They didn't fly in and set it down.
So it is. So I'll give you an example. There's one that young man would drive in, didn't park on, uh, or parked in his property, but I think it was like attached to where his dad lived. So are we going to go cite the property owner, which would be the dad? He didn't drive it there. Is it on his property? Yes, it is. And so it's just...
So do you cite the property owner or the owner, or the truck driver?
So for us, we're going to cite the truck driver. We're going to find the driver. If we get somebody who saw him drive there, however, we can prove that he occupied that vehicle in violation of that city ordinance, then that's the one we're citing.
So Chief, when you or your officers see someone that's parked in, off the residential street on private property, do they go and deliver a copy of the ordinance then and say, "Just so you know, we didn't see you drive here, but we know you did, so don't do it again, or you will be cited."
So that's where Donnie and I, we kind of met in the middle, because code enforcement is not going to make a traffic stop on a moving vehicle. We're dealing with the moving op violations. Donnie, it's code enforcement's dealing with the parked or the, putting up the hangers, or whatever we need to do. You know, of course, some people are extremely stubborn. You can warn them a million times, and until they finally get their hands slapped a little, it's going to continue.
And, and to me, if someone, I mean, if code enforcement has record that they went and delivered, uh, ordinance to the driver, and then when they do get caught, it should be a slap.
Agreed.
Because they've already had their warning, one, two, three, four, five times.
And I think what we need, you know, and I know you're limited, but anytime your officers stop somebody that's not delivering, um, on a non-truck rep, give them tickets, I'm sorry. But it's, we've been lenient long enough. We've, we've kind of tried working with them or maybe turned a blind eye to it, but it's, it's time to get serious with it, because that's the only way, well, with UDS, is start giving tickets. They'll stop.
So what in the ordinance do we need to change or add to put the teeth in it that you need?
I think we just need to look at maybe some of the verbiage. We need to look legally at what we can do as far as, like I said, we cannot, we cannot tow them off private property. It's illegal for us. We can't, we can't even do that with what we do unless it's an arrest. And so I think if you could give me some time to kind of research some more in-depth ordinance with regards to truck routes, that would be helpful. We're going to still keep working with the one we have. And we have started, like I say, we do the traffic stops, we write the warning, here's your copy. So our officers will know, "Hey, this person's had 10 of these copies. Those, that's too many," because we have a system that keeps track of it. Now, our system and municipal court is not together, so to speak, so, or with code enforcement. So I wouldn't know if they've given those warnings yet unless we say, "Okay, we've dealt with this person 10 times. Let's call in and ask code enforcement," because I don't know how they keep up with their, their log of that kind of stuff.
So there's going to be some coordination between your department and Donnie's department?
Yes.
Code enforcement specifically?
And I know specifically is, part of the reason that the three of them are attending the police academy right now is to kind of give them a little more, um, grasp on what they can do on certain things like this. And so that'll be something by, after, I think December's when they graduate, then that's another step we can take in a different direction, where you can have more of a environmental police, is what they call them. So there's, again, some more agreements and some more dedication that we have to do with regards to that division as well.
So will that probably alter or modify the ordinance throughout this month?
Well, I would hope so. You know, we can kind of look and see what we can do, um, as far as to put a little bit of teeth in it, to make it not just viable for us, but when code enforcement is certified as police officers, they will have a little bit more teeth that they can put into it as well.
So they will document, yeah, from here forward?
I think as a council, we need to do, get the ordinance the way it needs to be, so that your department and code enforcement can truly do their job the way we're wanting it done. Uh, but we've got to give them the ordinance correctly so that they can do it. it.
And I know, um, once I, myself went and looked to see where the signs were still standing, they were immediately pulled out. So, that shouldn't be an issue on still having, you know, truck route signs. They're not gonna give me twice, that's right. And so... That's right. And so, I just, um, for the long run, like you say, I think it needs to be a living document. I think there's gonna be modifications and changes with time, even with the way commercial motor vehicles are operated in, in the US in general. We have to really stay up with that.
I would like to know what other towns are doing about, about this too, if there's some good ideas out there.
So, I know the, Ms. Seals, I don't know what the lady's title was from Ward County in Monahans, but they would dedicate one officer, whether it's overtime or however they did it, and he would just monitor that truck route in Monahans. And, um, so we may start there, you know, to see what they did. Of course, they, they have a viable truck route that goes all the way around the community, but if you go down Stockton Avenue, you're gonna get stopped.
That was Teresa Bernadette with the chamber.
Oh, the chamber, okay. I wasn't sure she was the mayor, or what her title was.
No, but she's very involved, as she said, she talks with Tech Todd and the other groups, MoTran, everything. So, she's very involved with the community and has those conversations needed to help improve the community and enforcement.
Yes, ma'am. And so, what makes our diff, ours, to me, difficult, is you have so many roads that are the route, and it's easy to deviate off of those roads and get back on them, and, and it makes it very difficult. Especially, like, right now, what is the closest route when you leave the high school with a, a load of dirt or whatever, you know? Because to me, it's like, I would head towards Seventeen, but they may head towards Eddie Street. So, I don't know. I don't know what the right answer is to that.
Maybe drivers that are not familiar, so that's...
That's correct.
That's the way they show them.
And their paperwork, or their directions from, their contractors may tell them, go this way or go that way, you know? So, I think we've tried to work with the, those contractors as well, because it's easy to, hmm, I think that one's coming from the construction, but in reality, it may not be.
Could we, like, the high school, maybe don't wanna have a stable fee built for anything moving forward, we register their company, their truckers, and we give them a placard of some color to say, "Hey, I'm legal to be here." That way, if you see them...
Or I'm with, with some project or something.
Yes.
I think, I think if we're gonna do something like that, we probably have to issue a certain amount to the general contractor.
Yes, sir.
Because a lot of that's gonna be contract work, and it may be a different truck, especially if it's owner operators. You're not gonna have the same people in town for all of the jobs.
They can't be running down here all the time.
Yeah, absolutely.
And you will see different names on the side of those trucks, so you just don't know.
You'll have to spray paint red one day, silver one day.
And although I know that construction's not gonna go on forever, it's gonna be here for a little bit. You know, it's in phases, so it's gonna keep going for, for several years, I'm afraid, so...
And then, we have no timetable as to when that reliever route's gonna be built, you know? And so, we're gonna, we're stuck with this for quite a long time.
We are, and it's gonna be, it's gonna continue to be an issue. And I think the steps that council's made with the truck route, trying to isolate it to the, to the state roads, is a great first step, but it's gonna take, there's gonna be some transition time.
Oh, yeah.
And I think from, from the side that we talked about and authorizing overtime and stuff, we also have to take into consideration and leave a lot of that up to, to Chief, because there's also time when you can, you have too much overtime and you lose efficiency. And they're in a, they're in a safety-sensitive position where we don't want them to be compromised because they've been working too many hours.
Yeah.
So, we have to be really cognizant of that and leave that up to Chief. I think that's my recommendation to you all, is we kinda leave it up to Chief to manage the staff and, and her staff. I mean, I know the captains, they, they're very protective over their staff, and there's times when some of our, uh, especially our younger officers, kinda like some of our younger staff, and I say that relatively, uh, they want all the overtime they can get sometimes. But sometimes, that's not safe to do it that way.
That's right.
And to me, like, not having to put a lot of overtime, it's just other day-to-day runs, start counting out tickets, the word will spread, maybe it'll, maybe it'll take care of itself.
I think a lot of it will, once the tickets...
And I think that's, since last Monday when we were here, that's, that's already happening, you know? And, 'cause it is part of the daily duties. If, if we can make it happen, you know, they're gonna happen.
Well, we've been in this a month.
Yes, ma'am.
So, it will, I'd say it will get better.
It will get better.
And, you know, and not to be, yes, not to stop for, I mean, you know, businesses, but we gotta take care of our streets.
Understood.
You know, and now we gotta, I said it once, you know, it's, I don't think citizens want us to raise taxes for the streets, or sewers, or, you know, anything else, you know, to compensate for what's being damaged, you know? So, we are not getting rid of town, we're just giving them a better route.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and I think our, I think our only viable option to handle the street side of it is to maybe, uh, modify the fee schedule and then assess an impact fee to anybody that's in a larger truck, to where they pay either an annual or a monthly...
Yeah.
...amount for impact fee that is dedicated strictly for roads, and have a dedicated, we have a street maintenance tax right now as part of our sales tax, and that's used for roads and roadway materials. But this would be a way to allow us to address some of the, the abuse that we have on our roads right now. Is it, uh, another assessment that trucks, truck drivers aren't totally unfamiliar with that. Many of them in certain cities are gonna have that already, so...
And I wish somehow, you know, a lot of these trucks are not registered here in Grease County, so their taxes, they pay the fees they're paying, or score another counter, which would draw a portion of that somehow.
Yes, sir.
It would take legislative efforts to...
It would, yes, sir.
But, it's not a dead issue. We're working on it. I just wanna, I wanna rework it a little bit better. But, we're gonna continue with what we have on the books right now. Thank you.
Item half fourteen, discuss traffic issues on certain streets and the possible collisions of driving hazards on these streets.
I'm gonna tackle this one. I'm gonna tackle this one, too. And, and...
Who's left that, he's gonna call.
No, if I, if I do call on somebody, if I tell the chief, you know, I'm gonna try to, because she, she's, she took one already that we didn't, wasn't ready for. Uh, Councilman Arona and Councilwoman Seals have all, uh, have had multiple items that they've got concerns from our citizens about the way streets are. Uh, we've got areas where people are speeding down residential streets because we've changed, uh, something, and then we get the other, the alternate side, that we get people that, "Well, why'd you put a stop sign here? There shouldn't be a stop sign here." We're, and I think we're never gonna make everybody happy, but we're running into some dangerous situations that I think, uh, we need to have a discussion about, and potentially, uh, get direction that we try to issue or change, modify our current ordinances to address some of that. Some of it has to do with the number of vehicles with the, that are parked at a certain residence, especially on corner lots. Sometimes, you have a block for you. Uh, sometimes, right now, and you, you're driving throughout town, and you take a turn, and there's a, a duly pickup truck that has a thirty-five-foot trailer on it with heavy equipment on it. Uh, it's not a safe way to do it. There ought to be, there ought to be some restrictions that collectively, we, as a council and, and city, try to implement to where we can control that. Uh, I know that that may not be extremely business-friendly, but sometimes, we have to look at the safety of all of the citizens more over the, the likes or needs of a few. And some of it is just, uh, they've worked a twelve- or fourteen-hour shift, and they're coming home, and they don't care where they parked their vehicle. They're trying to get inside, have dinner, and go to bed. Uh, and I know sometimes, that's just the nature of the area that we live in right now. But I think we need to start having conversations here and in a public meeting to where we start addressing, uh, some of those items, at least beginning to get that discussion, uh, in play. Because I'm getting calls, and I know you all are getting individual calls about, "Well, what can the city do about this?" Uh, sometimes the answer is, "We can't do a whole lot. We don't have a, a, a method to handle that." Or, my response a lot of times is, "We have a limited number of staff." They don't care how many staff we have. They, they're the only person that they care about right at that time. And I understand it. I've been in the same place. So, we put this item on here because we wanna have a discussion. We wanna get the input. We kinda wanna start taking a look at this and nibbling away. As we said, we have an ordinance in place with the truck route that's been there for a month. As Chief let us know, there's some nuances to it that we gotta modify or change and update. And I would see this as being an item that's kinda like that, that all of us collectively, we experience some of the issues by ourselves, but then some of the items that are told to us, we may never run into. It may not be the, the issue on our street, but it is on, on one of their streets. So, we have to start listening, and we have to start trying to put something together that is gonna give the police department and code enforcement some teeth to address some of those issues. It needs to be not too restrictive, because we don't wanna restrict commerce, but we also have to look at it from a safety standpoint. Uh, I mean, I mean, I don't know, and Chief may have a number, but I don't know how many, how many times the police department gets calls about accidents of people running into a parked vehicle. But it happens all the time, if I'm not mistaken. And so, you know, there's, it, it's a difficult situation for all of us to be in to try to figure out what's, what is the best solution. But I think it's our responsibility collectively to try to figure something out that's gonna improve, uh, some of the stuff that's going on in the city. So, that's why this item is on here, to have a general, open discussion. Uh, I've had a lot of discussions with Councilman Arona, I've had discussions with Ms. Seals on some stuff, uh, about their individual concerns. And I think this item gives us a little bit of latitude to where we can have those discussions and start formulating some type of a solution that we can start implementing and putting in the form of an ordinance that'll address this.
I know a lot of the streets, you know, like where I live in particular, the house across the street from here was sold, been, been worked on, and today we have double, well, the last few days have been double parked. So, people going in and out, they're, you know, people that live, myself, for example, when you drive, you gotta go real slow, because people are, you know, residents are parked in the street, now you got this house being worked on, people are double parked for whatever reason. And I've gone up to, and I told them, say, "Man, park in the alley, or the alley's full."
Don't tell them that. Don't tell them that.
You know, I mean...
That's not a good solution either.
No, it's not. It's not.
But we do have narrow streets.
Do we do?
Well, there's a few that are wide, and I think they're certainly being taken advantage of, but it does make circulating up and down your streets a little easier when they're the wider streets.
Yeah.
But I think when it comes down to these, all the workers here wanting to park all their big work trucks in the residential areas, it's getting to where the residents that aren't in the, I'll say, the oil field, 'cause that's where most of them are connected to, but any, even if they're just here in town, uh, it's getting to where you can't park your own vehicle in front of your house. You can't have anyone come visit you because there's no place to park. And so, I mean, there's gotta be a little more equality here. I should be able to park in front of my own house. I shouldn't have to park in the other block if there's a space, because there's nothing available in front of my own house. And then, our local residents are considering moving, because they're tired of this, because there's the big work truck with the big trailer. Every single day, parked over here on this side of their house, and then they park in front of the house, plus all, and it's all the same family, company, however you wanna call it, because they call themselves family when you go talk to them about so many people living in the house.
Yes, they do.
They say they're all related, right? So, they suddenly become family. But then, they're also parked all over in front of the house that they're living in, and up in the yard. I mean, there's gotta be some restriction as to the number, if you're living in this house, there can only be three trucks or something. You can't have, just 'cause there's ten or twelve of you living in the house, you can't bring in ten, twelve big work trucks with ten and twelve big trailers every single day.
Yeah, and, and it is happening regularly, and, and there's a lot of time, and I mean, the ordinance that we have, that we're working to become better stewards of enforcing, does deal with, you, you, you can put your vehicles on approved parking services, but that doesn't include the sidewalks, that doesn't include your yards. It, it's a matter, from that standpoint, of maybe modifying it a little bit and enforcing it much better than we have. And that's where it comes into play to where Chief was addressing. If they're parked up in their yard, that's private property. Police department's not gonna issue a citation, but it doesn't mean the code can't.
But then, they're also not supposed to be jumping the curb in the sidewalk to get there.
A hundred percent, because they're not, they're not paying, they're not paying for them.
So, the, the more they can get in there...
The more...
The more money they're making, but like, like Councilwoman Seals said, you know, they're, they're going over the, the curb, which is gonna be demolished, because...
They've already done it.
Yeah. And, and so, who's...
Who's the responsible party?
Who's responsible for the curb?
Is it the property owner who owns the house, or is it all those trucks?
The curb and gutter is the, is going to be ours. The sidewalk would be the property owner. So, it's a city responsibility, but they're not paying for it. Yeah, they're, they're destroying infrastructure by just abusing it and not knowing what's going on.
But the reason we have sidewalks is so people can walk on the sidewalk safely, without having to walk on the street.
And our ordinance prohibits them parking on the sidewalk.
But then, when they're walking the sidewalk, what are you supposed to do?
Yeah.
Then you're going out in the street. So, you know, here's mom carrying one buggy and someone else on a little tricycle, and now they're out in the street because the truck's parked on the sidewalk.
Absolutely. And part of, part of that has to do with enforcement, I think.
And one of the, the, and I think somebody mentioned it, you know, on the corner houses, because like, you know, you come to the corner, and then you, you wanna turn, but you can't see it, because everything, you have to ease out, and man, that is, then you're, all of a sudden, you see somebody coming, blowing right by you.
Yeah. The worst one in town for me is a country club in Stafford. I, I can never see, I can never see around the corner. I don't know what's coming on. Yeah, yeah. So, there's, and, and there's multiple examples of that throughout town, to where especially on corners.
Oh, true. Trailways, when they're working and they park there, you can't see to get across.
Yep, you can't. Uh, I did talk to Code about that already, because I've had a couple of complaints. They have gone over there and had discussions with them to make sure that they don't fully block it. Uh, Code has been more lenient than, than I really, I would be. I'll say it that way. Uh, by telling them that if they're, they don't, like, some of the workers, if they're working inside the building with their tools right there, uh, they're parking there so they can take their tools inside and out, in and out. Uh, that sounds like a business problem, not a city problem, so, uh, I'm not as lenient as they are. And I've had that discussion with them. So, I think some of that's gonna change a little bit. They're having harsher discussions with some of the people that...
The only concern that I have, and it was, I had a call earlier today about, is, you know, with all that construction around the schools, which I, we understand, all that, the trucks and all that, but are there, and I haven't noticed, but are there, are there signs out there for no texting, calling while they're in the school zone or around the schools? Are, are, do we have signs out there?
We do have signs out there. You'll see them on Eddie Street. To be honest, I haven't seen them on Iowa, so I don't know a hundred percent on that one.
Washington.
Washington.
What about Texas?
I don't, I don't know about Texas either.
Yeah, and, and the rea, and the reason, because if, if, with, limited now with all the construction going on, now, now people are going other ways, but we still got the issue of kids. And, and if you've noticed, there's a lot of kids walking nowadays.
Yeah, I know. A lot.
Lot.
Yeah, noticed that.
But, you know, and then with the new schools, uh, we just gotta, and I hadn't noticed that, really, but I knew that anytime I come to a flashing light, you know, my phone go, I don't answer my phone. I jump out. And, but...
You're not supposed to answer your phone when you're driving anyway.
But the new, a lot of new, a lot of people in here in town, we, we just need to, with the school year coming, that's something we need to, just make sure that we, we got signs out, that they haven't, you know, like our traffic light right there on Eddie Street that's portable for the time being, because somebody took out the box. So... But, uh, that was, that was a call I got earlier today about, you know, we have more signs, or do we need more signs, or how do we do that? But it, it is something to go in, with what we're talking about controlled driving habits and in the streets, and, because those are residential streets, you know?
Absolutely. And, and I may be mistaken, and Chief can correct me if I am, but I think it's a state...
It is.
...law that you can't utilize or text or utilize a phone in a school zone. I mean, some cities will have ordinances in effect that you can utilize your cell phone while you're driving. It's not prevalent in the state of Texas anymore, or across the country. But, driving in a school zone, that's a state ordinance. We don't, I mean, it's something that can be enforced any time, yeah.
And so, when we get closer to school starting, we usually do, it would probably be my turn on coffee klatch, I usually go through texting and driving, I go through the crosswalks, school zone speed limits. So, we try to educate the public as best we can on that. But, you know, like you said, maybe more signs... know, like you said, maybe more signs, I don't know, blinking signs, or I don't know what else.
Well, I don't, I don't know, but the blinking stop sign, because they should do fly into that dish right there on Stafford.
So you mentioned crosswalks.
Yes, sir.
The kids at high school.
Yes.
I don't know if this is appropriate avenue to do it, but I'm gonna bring it up.
They don't use crosswalks.
They don't use crosswalks, so at least like, they're walking.
It is.
The ones that bother me the most is from the corner of where administration building is, they'll walk an angle to Dairy Queen instead of going straight to the, the nine eleven.
Straight to the crosswalk.
Yeah, and the way these drivers go sometimes, one will stop, the other one might not have not seen the kid.
Sure.
You know, so, we need to start pushing that, and I know it's more for you, Chief, I'm sorry.
Well, is that something could be discussed with J. Coe and have him send something out to the students?
Because especially since they have their own police force.
Yes, it should be, it can be definitely, and it is something, and I'm hoping that when they, and I don't know if they have their new police chief yet.
Me too, that's what I was just fixing to say, they do have a new police chief, we've already been in discussions about some collaborative efforts that we're gonna make with regards to the parking, we can add this to the list and see what we need to do there as well.
And because lots of times, they're in some pretty large groups too, I mean-
Absolutely.
And I, I know we don't have the you can walk now button, but, I mean, they just need to understand too, that there are crosswalks for a reason, it's for their safety and, you know, just-
Yeah, I don't know.
Walking across a four-lane highway there with traffic coming, and everybody's in a hurry, I mean, so their lunch, it's other people's lunchtime too, so-
There's like five lanes if you have a turn.
Well, the turning lane, yeah. So, I mean, I think the school district needs to maybe kinda help partner on this to inform their students that they need to use the crosswalks.
Well, and that's why I kind of went that direction.
Or you'll have that.
Yes. No, but that, that's where I think, I alluded to that and asked Chief that, because I think the collaborative effort comes into play, but I think the school police have to be a little bit better, do a little bit better job of enforcing, because they have the same capacity and capabilities as our police officers, so they have that authority to do that. And I think that hopefully this new chief is gonna be a little more progressive than, and decisive than the former one. I mean, there's some things that the collaboration wasn't as great as it could've been, and hopefully that's gonna be better now.
And they, and they do a good job, because I, you know, when I go, go to the schools to pick up the boys, they're, they're always patrolling.
Yeah.
Or, or somebody's directing the kids, you know, and, and so that's good to see both that, but I don't go to every school, I just go to the high school in progress. So, it's already, it's happening, I've seen them just park and then walk outside and directing.
Yeah, and I think that's the, the direction, and I think that that's where the new chief, if she can build that relationship with, with our chief, that they can accomplish a whole lot more with their combined staffs.
Because we do have an MOU, if you guys remember, some of you that were here, we have an MOU with the school district police with regards to the parking around, around the schools and the residential areas, because that was a problem some years back, and so...
And hopefully with things changing, but in the past, it seemed like, well, they enforced it if it was something that they wanted to do. If it lay or hadn't even, then they enforce things, but otherwise, they didn't always enforce the same thing tomorrow that they enforced today.
And that's where the consistency has to come into play. And there's times when you hear, you hear the complaints, I know I've heard the complaints when, well, Pecos Police Department gave me a ticket, but nobody else does when I'm doing the same thing. Well, and that's where sometimes the consistency comes into play, and maybe that's where the collaboration, and I mean, we can work on that to where at least we get a couple people that are enforcing the law, the law, the same way comes into play. So, it gives us sometimes, gives Chief sometimes a black eye because her officers are doing their job instead of being-
Good guys.
Yeah, instead of being good guys, yeah, yeah.
Sure, and you can't force each individual agency to do things that you may expect your people, so it's an expectation on our part of, well, we have our officers for you.
So does traffic issues also include alleys?
Yes, it does.
It does.
Okay. Where are we at on kids racing up and down alleys? Because we have to remember, that's where our gas meters are.
And telephone poles.
Telephone poles, utility poles in general, and, you know, some of these alleys have people that have metal fence with metal post. These kids gonna hit one of these, whether it's a gas meter, utility pole, or just hit that fence, and I've got three videos on my phone right now going choo, 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 and it's like, that's an accident waiting to happen.
It is, and we gotta have, and I see the same thing, Vanessa, especially in our alley right now, I see, and a lot of them are-
This will be my, our alley.
Yeah, okay, well, I'm seeing them in our alley right now, and it's not kids, it's people doing the construction down there or using that as their, part of their driveway, and it's dangerous, because I've been out there where somebody flew right by when I was opening the gate to go throw the trash out.
And you can get-
And I gotta step back, because if not, I'm gonna get hit, and it's something that we have to address, and I don't know, it's, I mean, because they're unseen, I don't know that our officers are gonna see that very often, I imagine it happens sometimes.
So we get the cause, of course, when we get there-
They're gone.
They're gone, or they're parked, or, of course, we're not gonna pursue them, that, like you say, is just an absolute fatality waiting to happen if we pursue them. Now, we will pursue it a distance until we can see where they park, we've done plenty of that, cited them, I know Mr. Graham has contacted me several times about just the dark that lies everywhere, and they're on private property, I can't stop that from happening now. We can get with the property owner and say, did you give them permission to be on your property? And I probably haven't made it a secret how I feel about the ATV and RV and whatever OVs we're talking about, I haven't made it a secret of how I feel about it, I think it is absolute fatality waiting to happen with some of this stuff, and that's the four-wheelers or the side-by-sides, I don't think it matters, you know, I just, I even pitched it to Mr. Lino, if we want to, as a city, entertain these ideas, why not find a piece of property, design, of course, charge people to go in, have them sign a waiver that they're not gonna sue you whenever they get killed, and knock yourself out, have a great time, I think it would be something really interesting for the city maybe to, to look at, for whatever reason, I go up to the pit that's behind the rec department, I think you could probably have a lot of fun over there, just a thought, you know, because those are off-road vehicles that are made, the ATVs are made to be off-road, can they cross over a paved road to get there? They can. When they're 12, can they do it? No, it's gotta be hogged with a trailer or whatever they're gonna do. But I'm really concerned about, about where this is gonna go, but the ATVs, to answer your question, Ms. Seals, it's extremely dangerous, it's a matter of when that's gonna happen, because it is gonna happen. It has already happened, you know, we've worked several fatalities since I've been here with young children on those ATVs, whether they collide with another vehicle, another ATV, or fence, rock, whatever, we've worked several fatalities already.
And of course, like these kids, they're not wearing a helmet, they're just racing back and forth, and like in this one, they have a buddy on the back, so this is gonna be two kids that are gonna get hurt.
Absolutely. Yeah, I thi, I think we continue to look at our ordinances and do that, and I think we have to, I think the biggest effort that we have to do is make sure that we put information out there and share information and try to get our citizens more involved, because we have a limited number of officers, and we have to be able to, from the police department standpoint, we have to be able to catch them in the act, because if they're already parked, it makes it, from a case standpoint, it makes it very difficult.
Someone has a video of them?
Video's nice, you know, you can figure out who it is on there and where they go. And like I said, I know in you guys' neighborhood, especially like from Ms. Seals, Mr. Graham, and Ms. Seals, there's lots of activity through there with these four-wheelers and these kids, and whether it's their parents' property or whatever, I don't know.
Do we communicate with the sheriff's department on, on this at all?
I have to.
Not a lot.
Or should we?
Oh, should we? I mean, that's totally up to you.
Because you don't, you don't have the manpower.
Neither do they.
Well-
You know, you got, you got other priorities.
Well, it's just a matter of timing and catching them in the act is the main thing.
Which is a difficult thing, because it seems like, and it's funny, because Terry tells me, when, when she's driving around, she says, and my son says the same thing, how many police officers does a city have? Because every time he's out, he said he sees one or two, and I said, good, but we don't have that many.
That's all we have, that's all this whole horse, right?
It's the same, it's the same police force.
The nation.
You're enjoying sleep.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, that's, that's, that's the issue that we run into, so I think it's gonna take collectively all of us to help and make sure we're taking a video to show that, or do something like that.
Can we have an ordinance that says you can't have, or, drivers, isn't the right word, but someone under a certain age can't be on four-wheelers ATVs in our alleys? I mean, can we do that?
I don't know. And I don't know if you know either, Chief.
You have state law that even shows some of that as far as the electric harnesses and those things. The thing is, they, now, in the alleyway, that is the city's right-of-way, so it's a little bit different than being on private property. So it's a little bit more enforceable than somebody in a pasture.
With, with as many as, as those kind of vehicles that we have around here, you know, it'd be nice like, like what they have in, between Odessa and Midland, you know, that, that's a designated area for them outside the city limits, so they have somewhere to, to, you know, ride on. And, but around here, you know, all, every piece of land is gold right now-
Oh, yeah.
-because of the oil field, but, you know, it's, that would be a great solution if we had property.
We got land west Texas.
West Pecos.
I hate, you know, it does carry a liability though.
It does. If you, if you allow it on your land and you do a specific property, there's gonna be a liability-
Yeah.
-piece in it, and that's where Chief says, well, if you wanna go in, you have to pay and you have to sign a waiver, well, Parker's not here, so I don't know how good the, the waiver is from that standpoint, I mean, you have to sign the waiver when you go to a trampoline park with the kids, the indoor ones and-
It doesn't matter.
You have to sign a waiver when you go to the accident place.
Yeah, yeah.
But that doesn't mean if somebody got hurt that you're gonna-
That they're not gonna, yeah, that's correct.
But the city streets are your property as well, so it's, is it any different, you know?
Yeah. No, so I think we have to work on it.
The solution is on, on some of this, other than just to keep enforcing it with the parents, keep trying to educate, and unfortunately, where those-
Going back to the sheriff's department, do they do ordinances too?
They do, they like.
Can they, or?
So they're not gonna enforce the city ordinance, because it's-
But that's what I'm saying, can they put their own ordinance in too?
Now, I don't know what you call them with the county, I don't even know if they have that.
I mean, that's extra manpower though, for, you know, coordinate with them.
I, I don't know what you would call it if the sheriff's department passes, stuff like what we do as far as ordinances, I don't know if the commission, I don't know, I never worked for a county entity, so I don't know.
If that's the case, then why do deputy sheriffs stop vehicles speeding down our streets?
It's state law.
No, but I've seen them on, that's state law?
On speeding, yes.
Yeah, speeding?
Oh, yes.
Doesn't matter where.
Doesn't matter where, so that they can, they can stop.
So they may have some authority, yeah.
They do.
Stop them on the law.
And, and I can, I can have that conversation with the sheriff, I don't, I, I mean, I don't have a problem doing that.
I think if we're that serious about stopping some of this, we need to get all hands on board.
I don't disagree with you. And I, I can explore that and have the conversation with the sheriff, set up a meeting and have that conversation with him, and see where they're, where they're at or what their stance is on it.
But I can tell you, there are gonna be a lot like what we do, they're not gonna pursue these vehicles, it is so dangerous, they're not gonna pursue, pursue ATVs.
No, but if they just seen them in the alley, could they stop them?
They could, they could, now, that's not an ordinance, that's a state law.
It's like to me, like, like the eighteenth wheelers, if you catch them, ticket them, don't chase them, and don't try to investigate, well, let me see which direction you came into this property, no, if you catch them in the act, yeah.
Absolutely, and I think the enforcement piece of it comes into play a lot more, and let me see what the sheriff's stance is on it, and I can bring them back to you.
Probably not a priority, but-
Yeah, no.
That's right.
Okay, F-15, update on the security of City Hall.
Okay, this is another one that Councilman Arona and I had the conversation on, and it was something he wanted brought back, just to get an update on it. Holly's been working on it diligently, and she's planning right now to issue an RFP for the front piece that we talked about up here, that would give this room a lot more security, the first week of August, and so I would anticipate that that RFP's gonna go out. I think she slated it right now to be out for two weeks, get some bids on the project, and then get that moving forward. We do have it in this year's budget, so she wants to go ahead and try to get it expedited so that we can do it before you're in.
We don't have cameras down there?
We do not, there's, there's ideas to get that and add that, I know Jesus has looked at some stuff, but we have to really, I mean, I, the system that we're talking about, that we've had the conversations, him and Edra and I, would be something that's gonna give us, we do have camera systems, but it's not, it's not what we need, and so we wanna have something that's gonna accommodate council chambers, the podium, the speakers, the sound system, everything else, try to incorporate all of it into one, because it's gonna be the cheapest option that we have, and start, do, be the best use of city funds to do something that's all-inclusive that way, to where we have a camera to where if we're, somebody's talking, if, if I'm talking up here, it may pan to, to me or to each one of you individually as you're talking, to make sure that the audio is audible, because there's times when people are watching online that I get the, I get the bad tech sometimes, can't hear anything, or it's too low, and-
My wife just said, sit up, you look bored.
Yeah, so I am working on that, and I hope to have something back, and let you, we'll give you an update, maybe on the August 10th meeting.
You know, some schools provide and allow teachers to be licensed to carry, will that be something that you would, because in an active shooter situation, by the time our officers show up, would that be something that we could obtain?
Our, our policy currently allows concealed carry.
Okay.
And we do have, we do have people that are in the facility that, we were implementing additional protocol and training, I'm working with the police department right now, because one of the issues, and from our standpoint, is if you're going to conceal carry, you're gonna be registered with our HR department and with the police department, and that's gonna require quarterly trainings, and I've had the conversation with, with Chief, and Kelly's the one that wants to, to manage that training.
Surprise, surprise.
And, and it would include qualifying at least once a year, and the other one would be more situational trainings that would help from that standpoint. The one thing that I've told people is, and I don't know if I should say it, but I will, is if you're gonna conceal carry, you have to be able to step forward, yeah. If you're just doing it to say I conceal carry at work, then don't do it, don't do it.
And that's a hard decision.
It is.
Is that out?
Yeah.
Can we conceal carry in council meetings?
No. Council meetings you cannot.
I have been carrying.
Yeah, and, and I-
Risking.
Can I have, can I have the handcuffs?
And I, and, and I can tell you that if you walk through this door, this glass door that opens and closes right here, in that little area, the foyer for municipal court, you can't carry at any time, at any time.
That's considered a court.
It is, and we do have lock boxes that Holly did purchase, they're not up yet, but they're gonna have, we're gonna have the capability to where anybody that wants to carry, conceal carry, you can put your weapon in there during a meeting and stuff like that with a key. So we do have, we are working, trying to progress that, we do have policy in place, It's just we're trying to tweak it to make sure we have the right policy in place.
And also, you know, the people that are strong enough to understand the decision they're going to undertake if it arises.
Yes, sir.
Not everybody, I don't know if I can do it, you know.
Yeah.
You won't know until that situation arises, or you may be one of those people, persons that, yeah, I can do that.
Yeah.
I'll say that.
And it is, and I can tell you that Jesus can confirm, Donnie, Donnie's not here, he had confirmed that I've had that conversation with them and made that comment in some of our staff meetings, that, you know what, I like the policy that we have. I think it does make this place a little bit safer. And we currently have, I think, six or seven, five, maybe five or six people that can carry here in the building and that have their license.
Okay, along with your security, do you have some kind of, I'll call it a panic button or whatever, like for Sarah and Wendy are over there outside, anybody over here, is there something that if somebody comes in that side door, they can hit a button that say?
Every single one of the desks on this level have a panic button that goes directly to the police department. And it's been pushed before, and the response is fast.
On purpose or accidentally?
Well, I think, I think one time it was on purpose, but it was to defuse the situation. It wasn't really a safety issue, but the police department came fast, and another one it was accidental.
The alarm company calls me, by the time I hang up with them and I come downstairs, there's probably a duty officer walking in.
That's the way it was when I was at the bank.
Yes, ma'am.
If a Teller accidentally hit their button, they were there.
We did that just over a year ago. So every desk in here, my desk has one underneath it, and it goes directly to the police department and lets them know.
Yeah, because I'm just thinking about those two girls are over there and outside.
Well, and that's where the danger of having Kelly do a training is Kelly's not very subtle about anything. And we'll give you an assessment of where the most dangerous points are here. So it is something, and that's why we do have the trainings every once in a while to make sure that our staff are aware.
High-risk time is when you have a council meeting.
It is. And that's one of the reasons why when we wall that off and have that, it's going to be an additional level of security that we'll have here.
Yeah, we got it, our situation got more dangerous with Randy on the.
He'd be here if it's.
You should watch your back more. See, the red is always.
You have to hook up a little vibrating wire, electrical shock to Randy, he won't hear that buzzer.
She, this is more dangerous when council's here because council's here. Bunsers out.
I'm glad, I'm glad you got that.
Yes, sir.
Is that it?
Yes, ma'am. Unless you all have any other questions on that, we'll give you an update on our 10th, August 10th meeting.
Okay, at this time, we will go into executive session. Under Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, 551.072, real estate, 551.074, personnel issues, 551.087, economic development, KDA, it is 8:24 PM.
I think it's open session and it is 9:10 p.m. Is there anything that needs to be brought before?
Mayor, I think we need to go back to item F11 and F12.
Okay.
Take action on those.
F11 update on the consent to encroachment agreement with Wrangler PETX 1702-1 Portfolio Owner LLC for property located at 1410 South Eddy Street.
I'll make a motion to approve...oh wait.
It's kind of written weird as far as...
It's to accept the consent.
So just to make a motion to accept?
To affirm the consent to...
Okay, make a motion to affirm the consent to encroachment agreement with Wrangler PETX as read by the mayor.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Seals, a second by Councilman Nona Rona to accept the consent to encroachment agreement as read or as stated. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries.
You might need to mention...
Oh, and Councilman Graham left at 8:48 p.m. During executive session. For the record. Okay, item F12 discuss and consider ordinance 23-02-01 and ordinance to dissolve the West Pecos Municipal District, second reading.
I will make a motion to approve ordinance number 23-02-01 and ordinance to dissolve the West Pecos Municipal Management District and this is the second reading.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Seals, a second by Councilman Saldana to accept ordinance 23-02-01 as read. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Is that it? Okay, so items for next meeting, I've got F5 and F10.
When are we doing budget meetings?
Closer scheduled, Deandra's working on that right now. Tentatively Heather and her have talked about having budget workshops on...
You mentioned F10 but you guys did motion on it. Did y'all just want it back as an update? On the contract?
Well, I think we were going to postpone and then we didn't postpone. Well, no.
Do y'all want it back as an update on the contract?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, thank you.
The week of August 14th, she...what Deandra and Heather have been contemplating is if it's good with you, we want to make sure that we get you some of the budget worksheets that they have been putting together right now and going through and they'd like to do with council's approval on one or two, maybe lunchtime budget meetings or if it needs to be afternoon that week on lunch Tuesday and Thursday. We can't do it Wednesday because we're going to be tied up with sports facilities all day.
On Thursday?
Not on Thursday? No, because we got the other one. We can do it Monday and Tuesday probably.
Yeah, 17 high...that Friday I have TML in San Antonio. I go to San Antonio that week.
Yep, nope, but then what we'll do is we'll have them and I mean Deandra and Heather were going back and forth. Deandra's dates were Monday and Tuesday.
I don't have anything else today.
So let's do a motion if we can.
We can do that and we can...and if you all...you're going to have the information in advance so if you all are okay with a lunch meeting, we can do it that way. If you wanted it to be after hours, we can extend it if we have to.
I'm afraid lunch is going to be tight.
Tight, yeah.
It's up to you all.
I'm going to get through it.
Okay. We can do it in the evening. Yeah, not a problem.
As long as it's not dark when we leave. Look outside.
Yeah, but we want to make sure that we're giving it to you a little bit further in advance than we did last year so that you have it at least to look at and then we'll come in and kind of like we did last time, we'll discuss everything in that workshop. And my plan is again this year to when we have the budget hearings and the readings, those will be in later August and September and Heather and or Deandra are going to probably present them because they've taken the lead on that this year on review and everything. But I'm getting...I've got them to do most of the workshops so they're doing the Department of workshops right now, so.
By the end of date tomorrow, we should have finished...we should have gone through every single department with the departments.
And then we'll do a second one with the final to have that discussion and get it to you also once you have that. Deandra's already put it on the calendar to get it to you, I think that it's the Wednesday or the Thursday.
We got a little map that you threw in.
I got two items, okay. Update, I've texted out working on Third Street.
That's going to be included in that F8 one, yes, sir.
Okay, and the second one, I've been approached with some people that are here in Pecos for a long time, may include Christmas lights for downtown area, possibly create a line item in the budget to pay for lights possible, joint venture with the county to share the cost, also in Mattsey Park if we can.
We can...we can put that on there, absolutely, and we are already having preliminary discussions trying to figure out how we can do that. Holly's going to go through. Yes, ma'am. We will do that at the next meeting. Thank you, Ms. Ma'am.
That was good to have people on your right.
It is, it is.
That's it, no.
I appreciate that.
Keep us in line.
Yep.
Anything else?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion from Councilman Saldana and a second from Councilman Rona to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries.
You might need to mention...
Oh, and Councilman Graham left at 8:48 p.m.
During executive.
During executive session. For the record. Okay, item F12 discuss and consider ordinance 23-02-01 and ordinance to dissolve the West Pecos Municipal District, second reading.
I will make a motion to approve ordinance number 23-02-01 and ordinance to dissolve the West Pecos Municipal Management District and this is the second reading.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Seals, a second by Councilman Saldana to accept ordinance 23-02-01 as read. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Is that it? Okay, so items for next meeting, I've got F5 and F10.
When are we doing budget meetings?
Closer scheduled, Deandra's working on that right now. Tentatively Heather and her have talked about having budget workshops on...
You mentioned F10 but you guys did motion on it. Did y'all just want it back as an update? On the contract?
Well, I think we were going to postpone and then we didn't postpone. Well, no.
Do y'all want it back as an update on the contract?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, thank you.
The week of August 14th, she...what Deandra and Heather have been contemplating is if it's good with you, we want to make sure that we get you some of the budget worksheets that they have been putting together right now and going through and they'd like to do with council's approval on one or two, maybe lunchtime budget meetings or if it needs to be afternoon that week on lunch Tuesday and Thursday. We can't do it Wednesday because we're going to be tied up with sports facilities all day.
On Thursday?
Not on Thursday? No, because we got the other one. We can do it Monday and Tuesday probably.
Yeah, 17 high...that Friday I have TML in San Antonio. I go to San Antonio that week.
Yep, nope, but then what we'll do is we'll have them and I mean Deandra and Heather were going back and forth. Deandra's dates were Monday and the Tuesday.
I don't have anything else today.
So let's do a motion if we can.
We can do that and we can...and if you all...you're going to have the information in advance so if you all are okay with a lunch meeting, we can do it that way. If you wanted it to be after hours, we can extend it if we have to.
I'm afraid lunch is going to be tight.
Tight, yeah.
It's up to you all.
I'm going to get through it.
Okay. We can do it in the evening. Yeah, not a problem.
As long as it's not dark when we leave. Look outside.
Yeah, but we want to make sure that we're giving it to you a little bit further in advance than we did last year so that you have it at least to look at and then we'll come in and kind of like we did last time, we'll discuss everything in that workshop. And my plan is again this year to when we have the budget hearings and the readings, those will be in later August and September and Heather and or Deandra are going to probably present them because they've taken the lead on that this year on review and everything. But I'm getting...I've got them to do most of the workshops so they're doing the Department of workshops right now, so.
By the end of date tomorrow, we should have finished...we should have gone through every single department with the departments.
And then we'll do a second one with the final to have that discussion and get it to you also once you have that. Deandra's already put it on the calendar to get it to you, I think that it's the Wednesday or the Thursday.
We got a little map that you threw in. And at the same time...
I got two items, okay. Update, I've texted out working on Third Street.
That's going to be included in that F8 one, yes, sir.
Okay, and the second one, I've been approached with some people that are here in Pecos for a long time, may include it. Christmas lights for downtown area, possibly create a line item in the budget to pay for lights possible, joint venture with the county to share the cost, also in Mattsey Park if we can.
We can...we can put that on there, absolutely, and we are already having preliminary discussions trying to figure out how we can do that. Holly's going to go through. Yes, ma'am. We will do that at the next meeting. Thank you, Ms. Ma'am.
That was good to have people on your right.
It is, it is.
I'm sorry.
That's it, no.
I appreciate that.
Keep us in line.
Yep.
Anything else?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion from Councilman Saldana and a second from Councilman Rona to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. It is 9:17 p.m.
I've got a sharpie paper.
Are we off?
Are we off?